Do you need to call, please?
Notice of public meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville. Pursuant to Chapter 551, Title V of the Texas Government Code, the Texas Open Meetings Act notices hereby given that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, in accordance with Article 5, Section 12 of the Charter of said city, will convene an executive session, workshop, and regular meeting on Tuesday, October 16, 2007, at 4:45 PM, 5:45 PM, and 6:00 PM, in the commission chambers on the second floor of the Brownsville City Hall Federal Building located at 1001 East Elizabeth Street, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas. Executive Session Item A: Discussion pursuant to Section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code regarding real property. Executive Session Item B: Discussion pursuant to Section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code regarding real property. Executive Session Item C: Discussion pursuant to Section 551.076 of the Texas Government Code regarding security devices.
I'd say we go into executive session.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Longoria, second by Commissioner, Mrs. Nettles, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We're returning to executive session and be back shortly.
Yes, sir. Workshop Item A: Discussion regarding ordinance number 2007-1100-44, amending the city code to clarify the relationship between the Capital Improvement Advisory Committee and other entities and dealing with related matters, including $500 penalties.
Good evening, Mayor. From the last meeting, we were requested of staff to produce this workshop tonight and to go over the changes of the ordinance, 1100.44, which relates to the kayak. If we recall, back in late September, I mean, early September and late August, several appointments were made to the kayak, which increased the body of that advisory committee. So now what we're doing is more of a housekeeping.
Let me ask you this, Item B, the appointment by the PUB, it's the PUB's appointment, not the city's appointment. They designate somebody who's going to represent them, don't they?
What part are you looking at, Mayor?
B on?
The ordinance itself?
It says procedure rules for the capital improvements.
Okay, yes. You're looking at the procedure. Well, we'll get to those. If you don't mind, let me go through the ordinance first and then, because the procedure rules is an exhibit of the ordinance.
Okay, let me ask you this, Ben. Who drafted this?
The procedure rules were drafted at the last kayak, both by PUB attorneys and, I believe, Mr. Goza provided some input. It's the same procedure rules, we're just increasing the membership.
Okay.
And Allison Bastian will.
How you doing? Good to see you.
We'll be going through the PowerPoint as you request it, change by change, so everybody can be at the same level.
Thank you. Go ahead.
This PowerPoint is a summation of the changes made by our ordinance to the code involving the kayak. Your packets contain a handout, which starts with Slide 4. It goes with this presentation, and what it does is it delivers to the text of the ordinances in their entirety, along with the changes marked, so you can kind of see them in context. Specifically, our ordinance amends these sections of those chapters, and it repeals certain sections of Chapter 300. Getting more specifically, now we start with the sheet, Slide 4. As Ben indicated, this ordinance provides now for 10 members of the kayak instead of seven. Part F allows for the mayor to select kayak chair in the future. As of right now, the kayak officers were selected by committee on September 7.
Let me ask my colleagues here, are you sure you want to do this? I mean, you know, I think you should let, in my opinion, you should let the body select their own, who they feel comfortable with. After all, they're the ones that are working together. As mayor, I don't have a problem selecting the chair, but I resent it the fact when we had a chair that was forced upon us, I would rather see the committee find its way and select their own chair.
What, who drew this language? We didn't request any of this kind of language to be drawn. Where did this come from?
Who added this language, Ben? This language was added by Mr. Dick O'Neil, the PUB attorney.
At whose request? This is coming from PUB?
Yes.
I wouldn't say from PUB, because we had no input into it, at least I know of. I don't have any problem with changing that. I mean, I'm bringing it to your attention. I don't have a problem with selecting the chair, that's not a problem to me, but I think, as a kayak member, I would rather see them select their own chair, like they did this time democratically.
That's what I say, too.
Mayor, and I think that the chair should be selected from within the board.
Absolutely.
I have a question on 10. That's an even number.
Okay, but can we all agree on that to, okay, the mayor can, why don't we do this? The mayor selects his temporary chair when they start the kayak, and then the body elects their own chair, because you've got to have a chair when you start the meeting.
I would just say that the kayak in itself, within the entity as it meets, decide on who its chair is.
Because that's the way we did it this last go around. I selected a chair and then asked them to come amongst themselves, because you've got to have somebody to start the meeting.
Well, they can always get together and vote on, who is the chair now? Is there a chair?
Yeah, you have a.
The chair right now is Leanne Greer.
She's right here, Mrs. Greer.
As Greer can start the meeting, and then they can select within the board and get their own.
Let them select their own chairman.
Yeah.
What about the 10?
I think.
We should be nine or?
About seven.
We should keep it at seven.
It was seven.
How many members are on there now?
Ten members.
Ten members.
It says here.
Ten is not seven.
Well.
What if we did this, Ben? What if we brought it back down to seven, and who were the last three to be put on there and just back to the original seven?
I don't think you want to do that.
I do. Yeah.
Well, that's your wish, but I mean, taking people off, they already started, I don't think it's.
No, just 10 members is just too many for that, for the kayak. Seven is a good number.
I agree, I think we should be at seven.
So who was the last ones to be appointed?
And I would like to ask Mr. Goza for assistance here, because I believe last week Mr. Camarillo asked a question regarding the housing authority membership, and then also the mayor was not acknowledged as a PUB member, too, and then that leaves one more of the last appointment. So we need your help here.
Well, I don't know chronologically how the order they were appointed.
No, no, I'm not talking about the order, I'm talking about those two issues. I'm talking about the housing authority membership first.
Well, the bigger problem that I researched. Research came up with, involved the Cameron, the Housing Authority, the Planning and Zoning Commission, and that was serving as an officer. I don't know, in this situation where we're talking about a kayak, I don't know if that, I haven't researched that. I don't know which member is also on a different committee.
Okay, according to the Boards and Commissions manual by the City Secretary, the appointment here is listed.
Oh, I think, let me help you out. Section 395, they do talk about how a person cannot, if he's serving as an officer or an elected official or an employee of the city, he cannot sit on the kayak. And Mr. Golansky is serving on the Planning and Zoning Commission, so that would be analogous to the situation I mentioned earlier with Cameron Housing, or Brownsville Housing Authority. Because he's, because Mr. Golansky serves on Planning and Zoning Commission, he would be considered an officer of the city and did that.
David Vella was on there, he was in the Planning and Zoning Commission, how come that was okay?
Um.
He was the chairman, in fact, of the last kayak.
Different section of the statute, his answer to the mayor, because.
Well, probably, I mean, it probably was not correct. If David Vella was the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission, the statute.
And the chairman of the kayak.
Yeah, probably, probably did constitute a conflict, to be honest. The statutes were it so that it can't be someone who has some sort of a, who serves in an official capacity, and Planning and Zoning Commissioners, because they make executive decisions about zoning and so forth, are considered officers of the city, and so then would be included under Section 395 from serving on the kayak.
That would be the PUB Board Member?
Um, well, if you're an officer of the city in any, in any respect, then you're prohibited under Section 395. If you, PUB would be, you know, a separate entity, it's an, you know, it's obviously.
But it gets appointed through the City Commission.
No, PUB appoints its member to represent him on the kayak committee.
But, but the City Commission appoints the PUB Board Members, therefore, them being officers of the city.
Hey, guys, if you all want to take me off, go for it, guy. I'm not going to fight you all. I mean, hey, I'm here to serve my city, I'm the one that brought this issue to the forefront, I'm the expert in this matter, and if you don't want that expertise, yes, sir, I am the expert in that matter, even though you don't want to acknowledge it. I provided a lot of guidance to the kayak, and I think we got where we're at because of it. Now, if you have a problem with that, it's personal, whatever, go for it. I don't think, I don't think it's a problem, okay? But they want to make, they want to, they want to make it into a problem, do so. You want to make it into a problem that Mr. Golansky's in there, do so. You have the votes, do it.
Well, I would mention, in response to Ben's question, that that provision is in the statute, and it's possible that we did overlook it in the past, I don't remember.
It's amazing how it was okay for Mr. David Vella to be the chairman when I protested that he was being forced upon the kayak, that instead of letting the kayak members elect their own chairman, we were silenced, but now it seems like here they, it's convenient.
Who selected David Vella?
Not me.
The mayor and the City Commission.
Was that, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Jim?
I believe so, I believe that they were appointed. But it came to my attention when I was researching the Cameron works and the possible conflict there, and it's possible we didn't catch it before that. Probably should have.
So you just caught this recently, or?
Take it through.
I caught it, actually, in context of the Brownsville Housing Authority, because the question was asked, if someone's on the P&amp;Z Commission, can they also serve on the Brownsville Housing Authority? And we researched it and determined that serving as a P&amp;Z Commissioner did constitute being an officer of the city. And so, I'm just carrying that over to this analysis, this has the same language, 395, you can't be an officer of the city and serve on the kayak. And so, I think that under the language that we have.
Is David Vella still in?
No, he's not there anymore.
It seems clear now, so.
Okay, so what is it that, what is it that Joe wanted to do?
This is the workshop.
Okay, but what, you've got to give guidance for him to go back and draft, no?
No, we have it as an action item.
Okay. Continue. Make note of the concerns of the commission, or commissioners, I should say.
Okay, well, I'm going to move on then. This is moot. One change, we did have, 31421 provides only for a simple majority vote, which I suppose is kind of moot now, if we're going back down to seven.
So would the minority reports go back down to seven, or is it an option?
Yes, the minority reports option will go back down to seven. So if kayak chooses to adopt that option, they have to submit seven reports.
Okay, continue, please.
300, Section 326A, the definition of body no longer includes kayak. 329B just kind of condenses some law, and it provides that not only regular, but special members of kayak must reside in the city, except for the ETJ representative, and also comply with laws applicable to members of boards such as kayak.
What happens if they don't?
Well, I might have to defer to.
Jim?
I'm not sure what the.
What happens if they're not complying with an ordinance, as far as members of a board?
Didn't they, I'm sorry, I was talking to Ben. If the members themselves are not complying with the ordinance, they would be removed from the kayak.
Who removes them?
This commission.
Would that go for any board?
Well, not PUB, but ordinarily, yeah, GBC, BCIC, for the most part, unless it's something, a separate entity like PUB that has a separate charter, and in our own charter, we're prohibited from removing a board member. Takes actually an election to remove a PUB Board Member from the PUB Board, but most of the other boards are, serve at the will of the commission.
All the reason I'm asking is because I, I sell the LaRisaca Board. I'm going to talk to you about it. And you have a member that's not a resident in that, just two members.
We don't select those board members. I think we.
That's what I'm saying, what can we do as a body to enforce the ordinance? Because we do have, it is a city ordinance, right?
Well, we're kind of getting off point a little bit, but.
I just want to know.
To answer your question, we appoint a certain number of representatives on the PID Board, and we can remove those members, but the Board itself appoints other members, and we don't have any authority over.
No authority of that.
Not over their appointment. If they did.
So they can break the ordinance?
Well, if, challenge them legally, but that's what we would have to do. We couldn't just administratively change their appointment to the Board. If it was something that they did improperly or illegally, then we could challenge them.
Well, this item is not on the agenda, but I know for a fact that's two board members that have been there since, since its inception, and they are not residents, but that's another issue.
That's another issue.
Okay.
But may I, well, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Allison, but I, maybe we should spend a little more time to, over the constitution of the Board, because we still do need an ETJ representative, right?
Actually, no, one has been appointed.
That was Pastor Alvarez, right?
Pastor Alvarez, yeah, right. Do we have somebody appointed? That person has served.
Right. And that, under the statute, we have to, okay, so that would be one of the seven people.
Correct.
As appointed. And then, does the, does the commission want to address that issue while we're going through this, or do you prefer to?
As far as what? As far as finding somebody else, or what are you trying to say?
Well, as far as how the Board is going to be constituted, the seven-member kayak.
Well, I think that we're asking for seven, and that there would be a quorum of four. The next.
I think we have nine right now, right? Or 10?
There's 10 people on there right now.
I think the question was asked, who are the last three people in? Do you recall who they are?
I don't have that information. I don't remember that.
We'll require going back to the tape and.
To the minutes.
Don't you have that?
If he's got it right there, he's got it right there, let's find out.
Got to find out, man. The last two, which was Victor Alvarez, which is the ETJ member, that we need that person. And then Mayor Ramada was, on that same day, acknowledged.
Uh, you have.
A PUB representative. And then on 7/17/07 was Ms. Leanne Greer. So those are the three last people that.
The chair.
That, who's the chair?
Oh, Victor Alvarez, you have to keep him, because he's an ETJ.
Yeah.
And you need a PUB representative, which is me, that was voted announced by PUB, and then you have.
But that was my question, if a PUB board member or an elected official such as yourself cannot run that, on that, on that type of a, on that type of a board.
And you have Leanne Greer, who is the present chairman.
And then the rest of the people, by this document shows that we're all appointed on June 26/07, so, including Mr. Golansky, which was the last person on the list. So that was the question to Jim. I mean, if, if by statute, under the Public Housing Authority, part of the Texas Local Government Code, he cannot serve, well, then that's one member, and then getting to decide on the other two.
And I'm not trying to make it even more complicated, but unless Mr. Golansky wanted to resign from the other boards, then he could serve here. That would be the problem. The PUB issue, I'm less clear on, because if PUB represented, appointed someone that was not also the mayor, then, you know, they come in as a separate entity, I don't know that you can.
My question would be this, and simply just maybe you would be able to, I hate to, I don't want to put you on the spot, but my, I would like clarification on this point. If the City Commission is the body that appoints, why is the PUB Board appointing its representatives? Is it within the charter, within the language of the kayak, that PUB would have an appointee?
Uh, no, I don't know, it's not in the, in the language of the statute itself.
So why is it necessary?
Well, it's, I don't know that it's, I mean, I think it's just.
Yes, it is, you need to go back and read it.
I have read it.
It requires, it requires somebody from the PUB to serve the Board.
I have read it, and there is no mention of any language with a PUB representative in the kayak. I have read it.
I think it was, this is my recollection, I thought it was done just as a practical matter, because the Capital Improvement Plan, the Land Use Assumption Plan, most of the data that's being interpreted all comes from PUB. So obviously, they're going to be heavily involved in the process. As my recollection, was that's why someone from the PUB, a representative from PUB was placed on the kayak, but I'm not aware of any statutory requirement that he'd be on there. You guys have looked at.
So then would it be a problem that?
You're correct.
So then would it be a problem if the PUB representative was not either a board member nor an elected official?
If the PUB Board Member was not classified as a, as a public, as a city official.
Correct.
And that's what I don't really know, because they, Commissioner Longoria, separate charter, it's a separate entity, I don't know if technically, it's probably, you know, an abundance of caution, you would say they might be an officer, but I don't know technically if they would be considered an officer of the city or not.
Would they be, if you require a member from the PUB to be present, would you give that member the courtesy of being on that Board, giving them ex-official status with a non-vote on the Board, so that they could report from and to PUB?
I believe that.
We already have the ex-official, which is from the city side, is Plan Director, myself, and Mr. Brusziak on the PUB side.
So you already have that input?
We already have, Mr. Brusziak.
But I believe it'd be, I believe it'd be permissible to have someone from the PUB Board that sat at ex-official, I don't think it'd be.
That's a reparent.
But he says we've already got John Brusziak.
Okay. Well, I only bring it up because it's, I don't know if Mr. Golansky is going to want to resign from one of the other Boards, or if he's going to want to resign from this one, I don't know, that would be up to him, but to sit on both would, I think, constitute a conflict. And obviously, we've got to have the ETJ representative under the statute, so I don't know if the Board wants to try to finalize the count for the seven members now, or let that process take, take place as we go through this.
No.
That's, that's something that, in the ordinance, we'll have to address when we get to that point.
Okay.
Well, if he leaves, we can reduce it to a nine-membership Board, is that easier? That's a odd number.
I think we need to go to seven, and we need to do that today.
What's wrong with nine? I don't, I don't think we should kick people off, man, just because you want to kick people off.
I don't want to kick anybody off. I think we should have one representative each, and if we're seven, and it should reflect seven. Not that I want to take anybody off. It was, initially it was at seven, right?
That's correct.
So we just want to go back to how.
So the, so the last three in were who?
The last three in were.
Victor Alvarez, then we have to find.
Somebody can't get rid of Victor Alvarez, because he's an ex-territorial.
The third person in.
The mayor, and then.
You can't remove people that were.
Leanne Greer, who's the chair.
ETJ members. So remove the ETJ.
She's the chair, then.
Correct.
You'll have to jump, you'll have to jump to the next.
Who would be the other one, then?
After that.
So Ms. Greer is the chair.
The chair.
We have, the rest of them added the same, yes, added on the same day.
Ben, let me ask you this question, might be a long shot, but would it be inconvenient or out of line to say that we would reassign a new kayak? Is that possible?
Well, with the PUB rules, you can make those changes. If you, tonight, the opportunity tonight that we have is that we're going over through this workshop, all the identified changes, and we're in first reading, and then hopefully, when we get to the action item, we can voice to make those changes to the ordinance, and as an exhibit, exhibit to the ordinance, which will be attached to the ordinance, is the procedure rules. Only in the procedure rules do you mention the names of members. In this, in this, through your actions, this is where you need to make changes. And we'll draft the changes, we'll document them, and that will be your first reading. And then when we come back at the next meeting, then you will have a clean second. But this is, this is the opportune time to guide us right now, and we'll make the changes, we'll come back in a few minutes, and we'll verbalize those changes, and we can go.
Back to Slide 7. Section 337 provides that the City Commission will adopt the rules for kayaks' business transactions. That was previously kayak's responsibility. Finally, Sections 320-1 through 320-5 are renumbered, and in those sections, the word "chapter" becomes "development code," and the gist of this is that these sections now apply to the entire development code, not just Chapter 300. Also, Frey's article in this chapter becomes "chapter" in this development code, again making it apply throughout the code, instead of just in that chapter. 302B adds a new definition, "development code," which is Subpart B of Part 2 of the City Code, essentially Chapters 300 through 338. Now we get to the repealed parts. 327E mandated that membership in planning and zoning also constitute, the same people would be in the kayak, and that's no longer the case. 329C can be repealed, because it's now covered under, I'm sorry, 329C can be repealed now, because it's now covered under 329B, the same information about special members. 329D mandated that at least one kayak member represent real estate or like entities, no longer that actually is covered now by 31420C, which provides that at least 40% of the members would have those qualifications. The information in Section 335 is now covered under current 31420F and 31421F. And 338B has the kayak meeting procedural rules, basically the foundation for how they need to lay out, and then, tonight, I brought the specific procedural rules, which we've been talking about, which list the names of the current members, as well as other specifics as far as procedure and how the kayak should run, and that you should have in front of you.
Any questions?
More specifically, again, the people are listed, it provides for the appointment and the terms of members, how to provide for vacancies, how to elect officers, and the presiding officer, which as we've, as we've indicated, has already been chosen, indicates that a quorum shall consist of six members, which now we'll change that. It tells where meetings will be, also procedures as far as jurisdictional matters, and that they may require presentation of a written or oral report by the Public Utilities Board General Manager or designated representative. It provides for the information of voting, conflicts of interest, recommendations, publicity. Finally, this, these procedural rules outline the duties of the kayak, which there are a few, but basically to advise, and this is the City Commission, in implementing various things. The procedures for review of the jurisdictional matters, excuse me, are also outlined here, as well as provisions for adopting and approving, amending, or repealing procedural rules. And if you need me to be more specific, I can.
Questions?
At this time, there's no definite term for members. It says, I'm looking at appointment term of members, it just simply says for an indefinite term of.
That's correct, it's their will.
And if we wanted to put in terms, then this would be the time to do that, right now?
That's correct.
When we vote? And the kayak follows Robert's Rules of Order?
That's correct.
And that's another thing. I, I, I think the body should decide for themselves what rules they're going to follow. I don't think the commission should be deciding for them.
We do decide everything else for them. Why not?
Well, you have that prerogative, Commissioner. I'm just saying, they should govern themselves. I mean, we should trust them with running the meeting. We shouldn't try to run the meeting for them.
We don't. It's just standard procedure.
All right, thank you, Ben.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um-
Pledge of allegiance.
We're going to a regular meeting. Please rise.
Honored the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one and indivisible.
Gentlemen, we're going to skip the invocation. Uh, please be seated.
I'll volunteer to do the invocation.
Oh, you, you're a man of the cloth? Okay.
Uh, I'm a man of God.
Please, please, please.
Just bow our heads, please. Dear Lord, we give thanks for this wonderful day, and we give thanks for the blessings that we receive every day. We ask for continued blessings for this city, we, for our citizens, for everyone that is in this room. We ask for blessed weather. We ask for all the children, and for all the projects that are going on within the city. We ask for good weather and for blessings among all these projects that were undertaken in this. We pray. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, uh, Pastor, uh, Longoria. Okay, let's go, um-
Proclaim.
To, um, let's move up item, um, let's do the proclamations first.
Head Start Awareness Program. Is there anyone here for Head Start?
Is anybody here from Head Start Awareness? No? Okay, can you read it anyway, and we'll send it to them?
A proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, declaring October seventh, October two thousand and seven as Head Start Awareness Month in our city. Whereas the neighbors in need of services incorporated, otherwise known as Niños Head Start Program, in conjunction with the National Head Start Association, is sponsoring Head Start Awareness during the month of October. And whereas, across the country and throughout the American territories, the Head Start community celebrates the program that has made such a difference in the lives of children and families. And whereas, these improved efforts will serve to ensure that our young children, regardless of social or economic status, will achieve their full potential. And whereas, public cooperation from the home, school, and community is needed to fulfill our responsibilities to young children. Now therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city, do hereby designate October two thousand and seven as Head Start Awareness Month in our city, and further urge all our citizens to support all agencies working for the well-being of young children in our city. Done on this the sixteenth day of October two thousand and seven, signed by Mayor Pat Almada and City Commissioners.
Thank you. Okay, the next one, uh, Southern Pacific Linear Park and Historic Hike and Bike Trail Week. It's an important event. Please read the proclamation. Is there anybody here to receive it?
Well, that'll be us, Mayor, the city.
Yeah, but is there anybody here, like, uh, Delina Barrera or anybody? Okay, go ahead. Please, if you'll come forward. She's very involved in this, so she'd be the appropriate person, I think. Doctor?
Larry Brown.
Larry Brown.
Larry Brown, okay. Larry, come up here. Both of you. Okay.
A proclamation-
Good work, good job.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, good job. Please read it, uh, City Secretary.
A proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, declaring October fifteenth through October twenty-second, two thousand and seven, as Southern Pacific Linear Park and Historic Hike and Bike Trail Week in our city. Whereas the people of Brownsville will benefit greatly from the above-described park and trail. And whereas the trail and park are done and ready for use, now therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city, do hereby designate October fifteen through October twenty-second, two thousand and seven, as Southern Pacific Linear Park and Historic Hike and Bike Trail Week in our city, and further urge all our citizens to make full use of this recreational facility and enjoy it to the maximum. Done on this the sixteenth day of October two thousand and seven, signed by Mayor Pat Almada Junior and City Commissioners.
Okay, on behalf of the city, um, Commissioner Camarillo asked me to allow him to extend the invitation for this event, and, uh, please, uh, if you're ready to do so, Commissioner?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to invite, on behalf of the mayor and the rest of the City Commission, uh, want to invite the public to the Brownsville Heritage Celebration beginning tomorrow. Dedication ceremony will begin at four P M. to seven P M. There's going to be walking, ride, walking, bike riding, and running on the linear park. We invite all the families to come out and, and join in the festivities. Local businesses will be providing drinks as well as refreshments to all the walkers, joggers, and bike riders. The city will be providing, will be giving away a bike, a bike seat, and a jogging carriage. Uh, to those, I guess, providing a ticket will be, a raffle will be, uh, will be ongoing. The featured event for tomorrow will be the lowering of a caboose on the actual rail tracks that sit on the actual park. On Thursday, dedication ceremonies begin at three thirty and will conclude at eight thirty P M. The Preserve America designation, trail designation, dedication, and the City Cemetery Center, which will be the first local city cemetery center in the state of Texas, will take place at five P M. on Sixth Monroe, with activities following from five thirty to eight thirty. Again, we invite each and every one of you to come participate and celebrate a new tradition for the City of Brownsville. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. On behalf of the city, we, of course, invite all the citizens to participate, and we welcome everybody to this great event. Thank you for your hard work. Thank you. Okay, uh, the next one is Bus Passenger Appreciation, Appreciation Week. Uh, Norma? Thank you. Come forward. There you go. Hi, congratulations.
Congratulations.
A proclamation of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, designating October twenty-ninth through November second, two thousand and seven, as Bus Passenger Appreciation Week. Whereas the Brownsville urban system has been providing essential public transportation in the form of fixed routes and ADA paratransit service to residents and visitors of Brownsville since July nineteen seventy-eight. And whereas, public transportation is vital to the continued economic well-being of Brownsville and has the potential to create jobs and enhance business prosperity. And whereas, workers, schoolchildren, senior citizens, the disabled, and those unable to, to afford an automobile, use public transportation to gain access to jobs, schools, medical facilities, and other fundamental services. And whereas, increased use of public transportation has the potential to limit traffic congestion, improve the orderly flow of traffic along city streets, reduce wasted travel time, and limit automobile pollution as Brownsville continues to grow and prosper. And whereas, the City of Brownsville has an interest in promoting the continued use of public transportation services by encouraging initiatives that promote ridership growth. And whereas, the City of Brownsville wishes to thank riders for their continued support and patronage over the past twenty-nine years. Now therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city, and on behalf of all our citizens, do hereby designate October twenty-ninth through November second, two thousand and seven, as Bus Passenger Appreciation Week in the City of Brownsville, and urge all our citizens to commute via transit or share a ride during this week, and to become active in education and advocacy efforts to promote the vital role of public transit in Brownsville and the United States. Done on this the sixteenth day of October two thousand and seven, signed by Mayor Pat Almada Junior and City Commissioners.
Congratulations.
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 On Halloween, uh, Day on October thirty-first, we're going to be, um, giving refreshments at the terminal and also issuing, uh, trick-or-treat bags for, uh, bags for the children. And you're welcome. Uh, we'll be sending you an invitation so you can join us. Thank you.
Thank you, Norma.
City Secretary, please go to item number sixteen, please.
Item number sixteen, consideration and action to deny access to the Army Corps of Engineers and the U.S. Border Patrol onto any Brownsville Public Utilities Board property.
Okay, I bring this to the City Commission's attention based on the fact that, uh, I went and toured the river and found that the, uh, it looks like the Corps, uh, of Engineers has been surveying property there without, uh, permission from the city or P U B. I see stakes where the, the surveyors have been there. I don't know how much or what we can do, but I think we need to, uh, stand united against this effort to build a fence on P U B and city property and in the City of Brownsville. Based on that, uh, what is the wishes of the commission?
I have a, as you all very well know, we have a very interesting relationship with the Corps of Engineers, where they will be vitally involved with Resaca restoration and other projects. And similar to the situation that we had with HUD, you know, where we almost lost HUD funding because of a certain entity's involvement. My concern on this is that by denying the Corps of Engineers access to any properties, that we might put ourselves in danger in any future projects involving the Corps and their involvement here locally within the projects that we might have here in Brownsville.
Anybody else has any comments?
I agree with that. A comment, Mayor and commissioners, I think the last people we need to be declaring war with is the Army Corps of Engineers. I do agree that we need to stay united against no border wall though.
I would think that we all agree that we're not for a border wall. The, the question becomes, how do we pick our battles? Uh, keeping the Army Corps of Engineers off of our public property may not be the, the best option. I think we need to work with the Corps of Engineers because obviously we want their assistance in, uh, the Resaca revitalization. We want to have them, you know, accessible to us. I think we should focus on lobbying efforts and do things of that nature instead of telling the federal government that they can't come onto our property.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, um, let me make my statement then. This is the single most important issue to hit, uh, hit Brownsville that's going to affect Brownsville. For us, uh, I think, uh, it deals with our cultural, our heritage, our economic, uh, uh, trade with Mexico, and, uh, our lands, farming, uh, access, floodplain. And for the Corps of Engineers to already be, uh, surveying property without even asking for permission is, and allowing it is sending the wrong signal. And I think you're opening the door to, uh, allow them to build this fence. You say, uh, we, we're saying that we're against the border fence, but yet we're allowing them to proceed to build the border fence. And before you know it, uh, you're going to wake up and find out that, uh, you can't stop them. Uh, the fact that these, these surveys, uh, have been going on without permission, without notice to us, I think violates, uh, any protocols. And I think, uh, it is within our right as owners of the land to, to, uh, pass this action, to deny access, and to, to reaffirm our position against the border wall. To provide, uh, rhetoric and to do some contrary is not going to, um, accomplish or protect our best interest, and I think this would be a mistake. But this is the, uh, commission's, uh, decision. I myself want to be on record with the citizens of Brownsville that I want to protect their best interests and stop, uh, before it's too late to, to build a border, border wall that's going to affect us. And I want to be on record that I will do that. Okay?
I think that-
Wait, wait, Commissioner, I think-
Are you done?
No.
Okay.
Let me recognize Mr. Garza, I believe he wants to say something.
I am definitely against the wall. I want to make that clear. But I also want to follow procedure, follow the law. And, and, uh, we're going against the United States government. We need to do it properly, and, uh, if, an injunction, if we can do it by an injunction, then let us do that.
But they also need to follow protocol, Commissioner, to where they should at least notify us and ask permission to get on our lands before they do something. They shouldn't, they shouldn't arbitrarily be allowed to get on our land. Okay, Commissioner Trani, you want to say something?
Well, and I guess that's the, the entire issue here, is how do we follow protocol? What we're proposing here is a ban on the Army Corps of Engineers accessing our property. It doesn't, and Border Patrol. And so, shouldn't we send a letter to them or give notice that, you know, we're offended by them doing this without asking about it, instead of simply saying, "By the way, you're banned from coming onto our property"? You know, this is the federal government. You know, if you look at our history, we won the last battle of the Civil War down here. But after that, I, I think there was a thing called Reconstruction. We need to follow the procedures. We need to notify the federal government of our displeasure with them and their idea of a wall. The We're Project is a wonderful project. We need to propose these other ideas instead of telling them, "We're going to fight you and keep you from our property. We're not going to win that battle."
Okay, and we have notified them. When they came and asked for permission, the city manager and I, of course, also objected to it, and we're not, they were not given permission. But in spite of that, they still went on our land at the surveying.
But they did come ask for permission.
Yeah, they, but they came and they were told no. They were denied no, and we passed, and we, and we, and we, and we passed a resolution against the border wall. All I'm telling you, gentlemen, is that you're playing Russian roulette with the City of Brownsville. Uh, you're giving them access-
That would be a matter of opinion on your part.
Commissioner, Commissioner, let me recognize you before, uh, let me finish speaking. Uh, I am conducting the meeting the best I can, so if you don't mind, I have the courtesy, okay?
That's a matter of your opinion.
It's a matter of my opinion, to be courteous?
No, sir.
Let us not be personal, please, come on.
You have a problem with that, state so for the record.
I need to say something.
Okay. Uh, let me, let me finish. I think, I think it's very important, uh, commissioners, that we are playing Russian roulette with the citizens of Brownsville's best interest. But if that's what the wishes of the commission is, let it be known that I, for one, am on record not to allow them access without them getting written permission from us to do any kind of surveying. I am for giving them permission to patrol the river because we are against illegal activity along the river. I am for that. But for them to come into our lands and, 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 uh, do geological, uh, and surveying without written permission from us, I think it goes against, uh, our best interest. Commissioner Atticson, you want to say something?
Yes, um, I have to talk to my legal counsel because I still have my case pending against DHS and the federal government. And because of what I'm going through with them, and I'm going to have to abstain from, from this, this, uh, this, uh-
That's fine.
-item because of that. Though I'd love to voice my opinion on it, it's just right now, based on what I was told by my legal counsel, because I am trying to get my job back, I'm going to have to abstain from this one.
And that's appreciated, uh, Commissioner.
Mayor, I'm excited.
And nobody, nobody, may I, please? And nobody, nobody's going to hold that against you. Okay, Commissioner Camarillo?
I just want to go. I, I stand with you all emphatically. I stand against the wall. Uh, I don't, I don't think this commission, um, will help, will be able to bring the change that I think we all want. No wall is good for Brownsville or for our sister city. I do think, though, that the people of Brownsville and, and the great state of Texas will be able to elect a new president in hopes of, of that new president being able to produce new immigration reform that will hopefully get rid of this activity that's taking place by the current administration. Nonetheless, um, agreeing with Commissioner Trani and, and his views, we need to serve the federal government notice. Um, but I think we do need to be careful and not step on people's toes when it comes to the, uh, Army Corps of Engineers.
Okay. Points well taken. Anybody else?
If I may?
Commissioner Longoria?
If I may, real quick.
Commissioner Longoria, then Commissioners Nows, and then Commissioner Trani.
Well, go ahead.
Please vote.
When Army Corps of Engineers contacted you and the mayor for access to come do surveys, why weren't we notified? We're being asked, we're being asked right now to pass-
Commissioner, um, number one, they contacted, uh, my assistant. Number two, it wasn't the Corps of Engineers. It was, my understanding, just Border Patrol. And I told them to tell Border Patrol, that's not the way you ask for permission.
So, in, in doing so, according to what the mayor just said, you and him did not grant them access or permission, but yet we, as a council, are the ones that make these types of decisions.
Like I said, we never discussed the Corps of Engineers. The Corps of Engineers has never contacted me, or anybody else in the city. Uh, Border Patrol contacted Carlos Riala as to his explanation to me with an informal verbal request. And I told them to tell them, no.
Never in writing?
And, and if you go look at the stakes, at, uh, I think Hope Park, it says Corps of Engineers there. The point is- there. The point is, the point is this, what is the commission's wishes? If you want to open the door, open the door. If you want to stop them, take action. If you don't want to take action, don't take action, whatever.
Mayor, if I may, I think the wishes-
I think it was Commissioner Longoria.
I think the wishes of this commission are very, very clear when we all put our names on that resolution for that no border wall.
Okay. Commissioner Trowani.
Sure. This is the problem that I have with this, is we're looking at Agenda Item number sixteen. It's a single sheet of paper. We have no authority for action here. There's no statement from the city attorney as to what our, you know, what power or authority do we have to stop them from coming onto our land, if any. And then from there, you know, what's our plan of attack? You know, what is our response here? It's just simply a resolution. You know, I think that there should be a little bit more information provided. There should be some sort of, this is where we want to go with this. Obviously, we've all said that we want to oppose a border wall. But when you sit here and start piecemealing things, it becomes difficult. And we obviously want to focus all of our energies at a single concentrated point so that we can most effectively combat this. And I don't think this is the way to go about it, unless you can give me more information. And that's what I'd like. I'd like more information.
Commissioner, I'm glad you brought that up.
That's fine.
Mayor, if I may, I-
Commissioner Nels.
Glad you brought that up, because I had a couple of questions, and Commissioner Trowani just touched on that. I just received one sheet of paper as well, just restating what it says on the agenda. There's no information, nothing for me to look into, so I can make a decision on this issue.
Well, I encourage you all to go to the river and go see for yourselves. But this is what you want to do. You don't want to do nothing, don't do nothing. I'm on record for what I would like to see done. You all want on record for what you don't want to do, so that's fine.
We're on record when we sign the resolution.
Let's have a motion to deny or pass. I make the motion to pass, to deny access to the Army Corps of Engineers or any entity that wants to survey or do any kind of preparation for the fence, okay? But allow Border Patrol to patrol the river, as they have been doing. That's my motion. If anybody wants to second it, they're welcome to. If they don't, let the record speak for itself.
Mayor, the action just, yeah, you changed the language, because the action on the agenda just says-
I can make the motion.
... deny access to the Army Corps of Engineers and the US Border Patrol onto any Brownsville Public Utilities Board property.
It's city property. It's PUB property, city property. Let me ask the legal counsel, can I make that motion or not?
It's a different motion.
Okay.
I think that, you know, the standard comes down to, is it substantially inform the public of the issue that's going to be decided? PUB property, city property, I mean, we tend to view that as being largely interchangeable. I don't think PUB does necessarily. But I think it's probably permissible to change the motion from the wording you have on the agenda to say city property.
Okay. Okay, I changed the motion to city property, which is also includes PUB property. There's a motion there. If somebody would like to make it, second it, welcome it. If not, let the record stand. Okay.
I'm just concerned about the legality of it, that's all.
Okay. It dies for a lack of a second. And we move on to, nobody else has a motion on this, right? So, we move to item fifteen.
Item fifteen, consideration in action to retain an attorney to represent the city of Brownsville in the contemplated litigation regarding the border wall.
Wait a second, can you read fourteen also?
Item fourteen, consideration in action to take affirmative action against the furtherance of the Department of Homeland Security's plan to design and construct a dividing wall in the corridor along the Rio Grande River at the US and Mexico border in the area located in and adjacent to the city of Brownsville, Texas.
Okay. I think you all made your points well known, item sixteen, so I think they apply to fourteen and fifteen. But let's hear from our city attorney here on this one.
Mayor, members of the City Commission, I've had some discussion with other attorneys in the community. Ramon Garcia, who was the ex-county judge in Hidalgo, and also constitutional law specialist in Houston, Jim Blackburn. And they think that there are some possible legal efforts that we could make to oppose the Secure Fence Act. Just, I think you've heard this in other forums by now, but the Secure Fence Act was passed and it essentially gives the Director of the Department of Homeland Security, Sherthoff, pretty much unlimited power to come in and build a fence of this sort, a wall of this sort. It gives them the, it's one of the, it's the only piece of legislation that I or any of these other attorneys who really are more specialized in this field than I am have ever seen that allows the federal government to suspend their own statutes. Sherthoff has the authority to waive the Endangered Species Act. And I don't know how much detail you'd like for me to go into about their proposed strategy, but in general, what they think is possible is to go to federal court and contest the fact that the federal government wants to build the wall here because when they, initially when they began this process, they started in Yuma, Arizona. And Sherthoff expressly waived all of the environmental impact studies, any problems or conflicts with the Endangered Species Act, and just pretty much went down the list and essentially waived the federal government from having to comply with any of those existing federal statutes. When they initiated the process for the border wall here, however, they indicated that they would perform an environmental impact study. The attorneys think that that's, could be significant and could provide some sort of a toehold maybe for the city to come in legally in federal court and challenge the federal government's authority to come down here and do this. They had some more detailed explanations, but I prefer not to go into that. In a nutshell, that's what they suggested they thought would be possible. They indicated that it was a pricey proposition that if we wanted to retain Jim Blackburn and people who are highly specialized in this field, that we were probably looking at upwards of, a total of, upwards of maybe $200,000 to pursue this. In the past, we've had similar situations, most recently with the Texas Gas Company and their unannounced rate increase. We joined together with other members in the valley, other cities in the valley and in the border area, and agreed to oppose that action unanimously and together and to share the cost and expense of doing that. I don't know if it's possible to do that here, but in the past, other communities similarly situated to ours have been receptive to that possibility. And I think they, I think they would be receptive, but I don't know if they would commit on a dollar basis or not. But in a nutshell, those are, that's the type of affirmative action that legal counsel that I've spoken with, who are, as I said, highly specialized in this field, have indicated they thought would be available to us.
In your opinion, can we afford not to do this?
As an attorney, of course, I would be challenged to see this go forward. Policy-wise, I'd rely more on their prediction than my own. And they really didn't feel comfortable giving it a guess. I think it's obvious that the federal government, that this is moving forward, that the federal government intends-
They're on fast track.
The indication is that they intend to continue rapidly deploying this plan. Whether this would be successful in terms of derailing that, or, I don't know. Not unlike the previous issue that you all discussed, trying to deny them access. I mean, it might, if nothing else, what I gather from the community and from the commission is not so much that you oppose the wall across the boards, as you just want to be included in the discussions to see what other alternatives there may be. And there may not be any, I don't know. But if we had a seat at the table to at least discuss that, then some of you all might have opinions or suggestions that would be, that they would heed.
My concerns, Jim, is, one, as raised when we talked to the attorney, it's standing. The other is jurisdiction. I believe that the city cannot afford not to do it because if they initiate a lawsuit against us, I mean, they're already doing the surveying, so we know they're doing regardless of what we think or approve or don't approve. And it is on fast track, according to the meeting I had with Border Patrol. If they initiate action, we could lose jurisdiction to Houston. And, you know, and then it'll be out of control to where we'd have to contend with an environment that would not be friendly to the border, I think, could possibly happen. And that's the purpose of bringing it here for the commission to take action by hiring an attorney and starting the process to protect our city from this project that the Homeland Security is already determined to do, regardless of what we think. And as they're showing by doing the surveying without even our permission. But again, this is up to the commission. I'm just one vote, I bring it to the commission. If they choose not to do nothing, well, then, you know.
I guess my question, Mayor, is going to be, and Jim, the last time we met with him in executive session, we asked him for some information. We asked his attorneys for some information. And I received nothing. I didn't receive anything from them. And they said that they would be glad to send us the information that they already had. And I don't know if anybody else received anything.
No, and I think that's one of the questions I had, because they had talked about forming a PAC essentially between other communities in the area that were interested in going forward, sharing of costs. They also talked about providing us information as far as what basis, and then also a template to make the complaint as far as the environmental impact study and these other issues. And I personally haven't received anything either.
I did, I actually-
And I guess my question, to, let me just finish this. Maybe shouldn't it be the Texas Border Coalition should, the ones to be hiring these attorneys?
They would, I think, be, would also have standing and would be able to-
No, their question, the standing, they did it through the Texas Border Coalition. In fact, the city manager was there. They support, Brownsville is ground zero. That's what I think the commission doesn't understand. They're going to hit first here, okay? And they're going to ask for permission, they're going to do it, okay? And we're opening the door to them. Brownsville is the one that's affected the most with twenty, over 23 miles. They'll fortify the city on the southern perimeter. If we're going to wait for somebody else to act, then we're going to have a lot of explaining to do to our constituents. Why do we wait when we're the ones going to be hit first? Then they could take action up to the north after they hit us. Now, the city manager was on conference with all the mayors and myself, and they all indicated they would support something like this if we get involved in the litigation, if need be. Am I right?
Mayor, if I may, I-
Do we have anything in writing?
If I may, Mayor.
I mean, they're asking for $200,000 and we haven't seen-
They passed a resolution, they passed a resolution in support of, if we have the litigation.
That's my question, Mayor, that we do understand exactly what's going on, but you're asking us to give some attorneys $200,000 when we have received nothing from them? We've asked them for some information and we haven't received anything.
Well, this authorizes the city attorney, the city manager, to enter into discussion about hiring them.
And that brings up another point. If we have our attorneys, maybe shouldn't our attorneys be taking the lead and researching legal issues to protect the Brownsville, the city of Brownsville's residents' interest?
That's not his expertise.
Let me first say that the, Jim Blackburn did send me information the following day, and it indicated on there that it had been copied to the city commissioners. And I haven't, and I also-
I don't see anything.
I'll verify my-
Commissioners, may I, I believe we're on a timetable here, and we don't have much time.
Very short time.
You know, and let us, let us take affirmative action. Let us go ahead and approve this. Later on, we can have, we'll talk to the University of Texas. They have an interest.
Commissioner Garza, you have before you a decision, two decisions now to make tonight, which you have not been informed of until now. Two people in this room are the ones that know what is going on.
But we met in executive session, and a lot of this was discussed in executive session. I know that.
We can't discuss what was in the executive session, but-
But we were informed.
Two people are informed. Are you informed as to what the decisions you're going to make? We are against the wall. But all you have in your package is one page introducing this item. There is no information as to what's gone on. Who have you talked to unless, unless-
I agree with you. If we table this, can we bring it up in two weeks? Are we, I'm concerned about the timetable.
That's all about air.
Look, you have as much information as I have. As much as information you were copied like everybody else was. Jim was copied. But you have, let me tell you this. You all spoke to the attorneys in the executive session, so you have as much information as I have. The only thing different is that I went to the river, looked at what was going on, I brought the concern to you. They're already taking steps to build the wall. Now-
Well, they already have the sentry posts and everything else out on the east side of Brownsville. I think they're already there.
Commissioner, allow me to finish, okay? They're already taking steps to do this. Can the city afford to take a wait and see? When they're on fast track, wouldn't it be more prudent to protect our city, to take initial action, to authorize the city manager and the city attorney to start negotiating a contract, and to prepare a lawsuit and an injunction to stop the construction of the wall? Wouldn't that be in our best interest? We got lands that we're going to lose, you got farmers that are going to be affected, you got historical sites that are going to be affected, the floodplain is going to be affected. Now, that information I have by visiting the river, now, if you want that kind of information, go visit for yourself.
Mayor, but when we talked to his attorneys, we asked them if they were, could guarantee anything. They said, no, they couldn't guarantee it. So you're asking us to get $200,000 from our reserves?
Can't be no guarantee.
And we don't know what we're going to get?
But can we afford not to do it?
Okay, the question-
The question is, can we afford not to do it, Commissioner?
Did we get the template? Did we get the template from them on how to process our position to the federal government? Did they provide us that?
That was done.
The material they provided me, and I apologize, I took it for granted that you had also received it. And I received it the day after our meeting in Tuesday. They laid out, what they did was describe the procedure we had to go through, including the public hearings which we just had, and the information from which we had to have to the Department of Homeland Security yesterday, which we did. So, the only template they provided was just sort of a checklist of the things that we needed to go through. And we have followed them to date at no expense so far.
We had the public hearing as required. It was short notice, but we did it. And I may add, the only one that showed up for the public hearing was Commissioner Garza.
Mayor, I have a comment, Mayor. Can I, Mayor, could I speak real quick?
Certainly.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. Are you confident in those two individuals that spoke to us last time in executive session? Are you confident in the work they do? Because, you know, my concern is this, we only heard from two attorneys, and that say they want to take on the federal government, right? Two individuals only. We didn't ask for any other input, any other counsel that might say, "We want to combat for Brownsville." Nobody has said that. And so my concern is that the city of Brownsville says, "You know what? We're going to go with you because you say you want to help." Yet, if and when this gets to Supreme Court, it will stop there because they can't go any further. And they said that. So, what happens after that? And who will be behind the city of Brownsville from that point? And that's my concern, because we haven't heard from anybody else. And who might also be experts or above them, I don't know. But again, that's my concern. We've only heard from two individuals.
Let me ask something. This is a specialized field. Commissioner, I would recommend that you not comment, because it could compromise you. And as a friend, I'm telling you, just withhold your comments. And I think the public can understand that. You know, this is a very specialized field, as you recognize, Jim. I feel that there's too much at risk, gentlemen. Don't play politics on this thing. And let's be united. We already passed a resolution against the border wall. Now, that's rhetoric. We need to take action. And take action in a united way to send a strong message to the federal government, okay, that we're not going to permit the wall. We're going to, if we go down, we're going to go down fighting for our citizens, to protect our right, to make sure that we're not fortified. That's the message we need to send. And it starts by hiring, by authorizing the city manager and the city attorney to start the process of hiring attorneys and report back to us in two weeks if you want to. But let him start. That way he can clearly define what's expected of each other. And that way we can go to other communities that have expressed interest and lay out the groundwork to them that we're serious about this and need their help. Yes, Commissioner?
Mr. Garza and City Manager Charlie Campbell, what is your recommendation?
Go ahead, Charlie.
I personally, while I'm standing here and got the mic close-
Yes, I want to hear.
I would like to discuss with them what our options would be, and if it would be possible to come in at, and I'm making up a number, $50,000, and initiate the injunction and file it and see where that leaves us. I'd like to get more information from them about the possible stages that we could go through, and whether or not it's possible to initiate this without signing on for the whole thing. We might find that, you know, federal court would not look kindly at what we were trying to do early on. And I don't feel like I have a good sense of that from them at this point. I would like to discuss with them, obviously with no authority to make a commitment on part of the commission, but to just get more information. And again, I apologize, I thought you had already received what I have.
They have not.
I'll make sure that that goes out tomorrow, if you're still interested in seeing it.
Okay.
That'll be my feeling.
Let's hear from the city manager.
Get information. Go ahead, Charlie.
Well, I tend to agree with our city attorney. We, I don't feel that right now we should obligate ourselves to any large sum of money being paid. We, I don't feel that right now we should obligate ourselves to any large sum of money being paid, because we've only met with them once. I didn't receive any information either. In discussing this with the, with the Texas Border, Border Coalition, which is, which is made up of, of mayors and elected officials from Brownsville to El Paso, they're all in the same consensus as, as we are, that we and they don't want the border wall. But, we haven't sat down with them to discuss how much participation each and every city is gonna, is going to involve themselves with in, in this effort. We haven't discussed that.
And I guess that was my question, Charlie, is maybe we should, the, the Texas Border Coalition, we should split this amongst everybody? Why, you know.
Well, can we go ahead and?
Get two hundred thousand right now, and all I have is one.
Wait, 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 let, let Commissioner just now finish talking.
All I have is one sheet of paper asking me to support to give two hundred thousand, and I don't have any other information. I'd like to get some more information, Jim, so I can be more comfortable in making my decision.
Let me reiterate what I said. I want us to authorize the city manager and city miss, city attorney to initiate the discussions, to come back in two weeks, what they brought out of those discussions to hiring these attorneys. That's what I said.
Okay, Mayor, but it's because you're actually here.
You have a problem with that?
No, the, the problem is that the item reads, and it's under your name.
That's fine.
Consideration and action to retain an attorney to represent the city of Brownsville in the contemplate litigation regarding the border wall.
Okay, I, I clarified it earlier and I said, to initiate, authorize him to initiate discussions.
That's a move.
Okay, that's what I said. Before we. I'm talking about serious discussions, I'm not talking about, you know, hey, can you do it? Yes, I need to know exactly what to expect from them and what they expect from us. That's what I said earlier, okay?
Well, I, I would think that if, if we talk to them and we talk to some other people as well, so that we're not just simply getting it from, from one source. And then the other issue that Commissioner Camarillo mentioned is this will probably get to the Fifth Circuit or to the Supreme Court. We need somebody who's gonna be able to finagle those waters, okay? And so, I would like to see, is there somebody? Mr. Blackburn's a very well-respected attorney, and I know that he handles these issues on a regular basis, but is there some, and the problem that I have is he himself said he wouldn't feel comfortable taking it to the Supreme Court. And like you mentioned, I, I think it'd be a good idea, you know, if we could maybe just get the injunction done by him, if we can see what our other resources are. And then from there, let's see what support we can get from these other communities, because we don't wanna be on the hook and standing alone. We need to fight this. I think we've all agreed many, many times that this is something that we want to stop, but we also need to be smart about it. And just taking it from the first person that comes off and says, hey, if you give us two hundred thousand dollars and, and we'll help you out, and, oh, well, you know, by the way, I'm gonna have to stop before we get halfway there. And that, that doesn't sound like a good idea to me. But if we can kinda take it a little bit slower, talk to a couple of other attorneys, and see what we can do, and come back in two weeks. And if we found somebody, which I would think that if we put some, you know, effort into it, we should be able to find somebody, and we can get some commitments from these other communities, well, I think we'd all pretty much be for it.
Okay, let, let, let me say this. Because we have two entities here involved, Public, P U B and the city of Brownsville. Let me make the motion and couch it this way. Authorize the city manager, the city attorney, and the P U B attorney to hold discussions with Jim Blackburn, Ramon Garcia, to see how we would pursue what's expected from both parties, and who would take the lead if it goes to the appeals court. Along with authorizing the city attorney to look for any other competent counsel in that field to get a second opinion on the same lawsuit if we have to.
I would be, I would support you on that, I would just want to exclude the P U B attorney.
Why would you wanna exclude him?
Because he is, if he is who we're talking about, he is a brand-new attorney. I would, I, I think that Jim and Charlie Calvert would be sufficient enough to make the right decision as to who we would have, I don't think that the involvement of P U B would be necessary on this.
Well, I would think if you have, if you have more legal experts on the case, that'd be good. But if that's, if you have a problem with that, I don't have a problem with that. Okay, okay, a motion, a motion without the P U B attorney.
I second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion second, all in favor?
No, yes.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Abstained.
Okay, you have one abstention for the record, Mr. Charlie Atkinson. Nobody opposed this motion and passed unanimously. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
And Commissioner, just to be sure I have my marching order straight. I will contact them right away. I'll resend and make sure you all receive the information which I received previously. And also find out who else may be specialized specifically in this area and bring a full report to you in two weeks, hopefully including what other communities would be willing to join us.
Can you, can you give it to us prior, I mean?
Yeah, if you can get that information to us quicker, that'd be better.
Are you reporting two weeks?
I will have it ready for, for formal presentation at public meeting in two weeks, but as soon as I get the information, I'll relay that to you instead.
You'll copy everybody?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Jim.
The cities that would, the cities that would involve themselves in this are obviously the valley border cities, McAllen, and then El Paso, the Rio, those cities, that may, those are the cities that compose this Texas Border Coalition.
We've gotta take the lead.
Okay, thank you. Um, let's, I, I apologize, I skipped the public comments.
Yes, sir.
Uh, and I apologize to you all. Let's, let's get back to the public comments, please.
Number one?
Thank you very much.
Number one, Sergio Sarate.
Mr. Sarate, welcome to our chambers.
Mayor, City Commission. Hello, my name is Sergio Sarate, and I'm here on behalf of the nonprofit organization called Down by the Border. I am here to publicly and respectfully invite you to a, our second annual fall festival that we're gonna have for our children. Number one, Down by the Border is an association that helps children with Down Syndrome and other disabilities. That, that is what we do. And we are having this, this coming next Saturday, the twenty-seventh. It's at nine o'clock at Dean Porter Park. And there's a lot of things that are going on with it. We have more than four hundred and fifty volunteers that will be there to help us. The main difference between this children's festival and others is that it is open to all children of all abilities. So, we will not turn anyone away, everyone can enjoy this festival. It is absolutely free. Beforehand, we'll have a run, walk, ride that the Brownsville marathoners and the River Rockets have most graciously helped, asked to join us in, in this endeavor. Uh, there's bouncers, there's a petting zoo, there's an outdoor adventure camp by the University of Texas at Brownsville. There's an arts and crafts that is sponsored by the Children's Museum. Face painting by the Dr. Julieta Garcia Middle School. Uh, many performers, various groups for aquatic dancing, karate exhibitions, and also many agencies. Um, one mayor that, I, I don't know if you knew this, but we're bringing the S B C A. They're bringing, I believe, ten animals, either dogs and cats. And anyone that wants to step up to the plate and adopt one of these animals, the board has authorized us to pay for the, the fee that goes into the adoption, okay? So we've included that. But the main difference between this and the underlying message that we, the reason that we put this together is that we ask the children to take a pledge. Uh, the children with abilities, we ask them to be mindful of a child with disabilities. Uh, we ask them to not pick on them when they see them at school, to not let others pick on them as well. And, um, the chief of police has agreed to give that oath, and every child that takes that oath will take away, I believe, a patch or something that comes from the city of Brownsville and the police department. And, and that is the essence of what we're doing here. You know, we respectfully invite you, we invite the city to come out and join us that day. And in closing, I, I just wanna say that there's twelve percent of B I S D students have a disability of some sorts. Uh, there are more than twenty-five thousand children in the Rio Grande Valley who have a disability of some sort. So, I ask you as a commission as well to be mindful of, of our children and of the different agencies that we support, that you support, that they open, not only, um, crack the door open for our children, but open them wide open. Because when you have a child in a wheelchair, it takes those two doors, and it takes a battery of, of parents and support group to, to bring them out. So, we invite the, the city, we invite you to be there with us, and, um, come and have a lot of fun and, and open your eyes, and it'll be a day for awareness and acceptance for, for the children of Brownsville, okay?
Thank you very much.
Can I approach the bench, I'd like to give you guys a.
We can't have discussions with the, uh, public speakers, but we thank you for coming. And we admire you for what you do. Thank you so much, City.
Public comment number two, Mr. Roy Gonzalez.
Thank you, Roy, for coming.
Mayor, Commissioners, you kinda covered everything I was, um, we skipped fifteen, fourteen, and sixteen. But, um, yes, I, I am against the border fence. And I think the city and the county should have a hundred percent jurisdiction on what happens in this area. To what extent and how much money and who you wanna involve, you know, that should have been, before you put fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, it should have been, uh, you know, contacted the different entities that, that were or are gonna be involved in this lawsuit. Uh, I always figured that Jim somehow could come up with the petition that we need for an injunction, or Mr. Tryonik could certainly lend a hand to save us at least from, you know, at the beginning, on the onset, just to get this thing started. I also believe that the county should have some, some, share some of the expense. So, and I'm sure Judge Coscos would be more than happy to, to join the effort in this area. Also, just one other little issue that I have. And I, this is for you, Mayor. I don't think it's a good idea for you to support Valdez for a reappointment simply because of someone tampering with his meter. If it was me or anyone that's out here, we'd probably already have a case number and a court date.
That's not true.
Okay?
That's not true. It's okay. Please, please, we, we cannot exchange. Don't be talking like that. Don't belittle anybody that can't spend. I will recess this commission meeting if I have to. Please, Mr. Atkinson, and, and the gentleman, he can, he can, he can talk whatever he wants, whether he knows what he's talking about or what he doesn't know about. I, I, you know. If they're not talking back. This is the common, this, uh, common period. Anybody can come and blast somebody here, that's not true. I think the city attorney, the city attorney. It's a city attorney, it's a city attorney's job to call attention to this, not your job. Please, City Attorney.
And I do wanna remind everyone of.
I, I, that guy.
That, the ordinance says we're not supposed to address anyone by name. So, the concepts are supposed to just be presented generally and for the benefit of the commission as a whole, and not directed to any one member of the community.
The only reason that that was said was because he represents the city of Brownsville at the P U B board. So that's the only.
But I think you're misinformed in some ways.
He's one vote.
But, but, you know.
That's, that's the only thing.
Let's, let's, let's stick to the issue of public comment and address me as a chair. Don't, don't be personal. You want, you wanna, you wanna attack somebody?
No, no, no.
No, wait a second. You wanna attack that, you know, after the chambers, I'd be more than happy to meet you. You wanna attack me after, after the meeting, I'd be more than happy to meet you.
Not an attack, it was a comment.
Okay, well, it sounded like an attack to me, but, but that's okay. Please continue with your comments, Mr. Gonzalez.
That's basically, that's basically all I wanted to say, and I have other comments that I'll bring up in the future. Thank you.
Be positive. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Now, who else?
Mr. Robert Uresti.
Welcome to our chambers, Mr. Uresti.
Robert Uresti, voter, citizen, taxpayer of Brownsville. First of all, I put two things on the paper. The first one was the political lawsuit.
The first one was what?
Political lawsuit, uh, for, against the government on building the wall. Uh, Brownsville is opening a, I consider Pandora's box. The way I read that paper up there, the Border Patrol is one entity that actually is one of the largest police forces here in Brownsville. Uh, they help everybody. I seen them help people that are broken down cars. I seen them stop fires, helping individuals across the street. I seen them do all of that. And when we do attack the Border Patrol also saying that they can't get on the, whose land? I thought it was the taxpayers, okay? I thought the taxpayers bought all this land, make the city of Brownsville the way it is. We're the ones that come up here and, you know, try to do, I know you're doing a good job and I know you try your best. We all have opinions, you know, but putting the Border Patrol is not, I have a lot of my ex-students are Border Patrol agents, and I have good friends, Border Patrol agents, and I've helped the Border Patrol agents too. When they need help, we should help them too. And they are our largest police force here. But when you open this thing that we cannot, they cannot come on P U B lands, is the city police ready to take over that responsibility of patrolling that area? Because you are stepping into that boundary, okay? That's all I wanna say on that comment. The second one is political signs. The sheriff is having one of the biggest races in the county. I can't believe they've been putting up their political signs left and right. And they're already, and I called the city ordinance today, talked to Mr. Romitas, and they said they're gonna be revising the ordinance for that again. Now, when I ran for mayor and I ran for commissioner, it was very simple. I thought it was forty-five days prior to an election, you can put up those things. But no, all of these individuals are putting up their signs in houses, on fences. They're not into right of ways, but I would like to ask the mayor, I would like to ask the commissioners to revise this thing and just put it real simple. Sixty days prior to the election, you can put up all the signs you want to, because Brownsville does have that audience. Please, that's all we're asking, in ten days, take them down. I follow those rules, and I still see some of the mayor's posters still up there also. Sorry, Mayor, I can't take them down, they're not mine, it's okay. But, but if you want to, I'll give you a list of where the places are. And I did see Mr. Longoria's poster too, and Mr. Trigoni, you have several, I didn't take them down, okay? Um, you all have posters up, and mine are down, so I'm, I'm okay. But I would like to see the city and the mayor and the, of course, Mr. Gosa, take this issue, and let's get rid of all these signs, thirty, sixty days. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Uresti.
Thank you.
Mr. Fernando Reese.
Mayor, Commissioners, good afternoon. Ladies and gentlemen, the issue of the border wall is whose jurisdiction does it pertain to? And the farther you get away from U.S. jurisdiction, the better off you're going to be. Because the issue is constitutional. And the Constitution states that the supreme law of the land, the treaties shall be the supreme law of the land. Here, we're addressing the Treaty of Guadalupe Hidalgo of eighteen forty-eight. And this issue should be addressed in the International Court of Justice, which is also the World Court. Because there is precedence already in the Arizona border, where a judge ruled, and she says, you know what? This court will probably remain moot. Why? Because Mr. Homeland Security, Tertoff, can waive all environmental laws to build a fence. That's his alternative. Plus, we also have, says you are a governing body, do you not practice eminent domain? They could do the same thing to you, but the International Court, the World Court, will say, you know what? This is a treaty, Guadalupe Hidalgo, this is what you have to proceed to. Then you have the supremacy clause also. The president is going to want to back it up, but then he's going to have to hold back because the World Court has more authority than he does in this case. This is how this matter should be addressed. Now, I would also like to say that, I, I will repeat, that the current of the river and the banks is the jurisdiction of International Boundary Water Commission. Simple as that, I mean, it's written there, and Laredo has already applied for a weir many years back, and they have not authorized it. The International Boundary Water Commission does not want anything to interrupt the flow of water from the Falcon Dam to the mouth of the Rio Grande. So, you know, you're fighting against the wall. Now, if you're, if you're going to do this, we'll do it. Now, if you're, if you're going to do this, we'll do it with other entities so that they can also bring out the box, and not only the city of Brownsville. We have the college, we have the city of Brownsville, we have the border, you know, like, uh, this gentleman mentioned, uh, here a while ago. There's other ways to say, why do we have to pay for all the expense? And, you know, to me really, uh, no wall at all, either fence or virtual wall, or whatever you wanna call it. I don't believe in any of it, you know? But this issue has to be addressed in an international court of law. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reese. Thank you, that's the end of the public comments. Uh, City Secretary, would you go to, uh, item twenty-two, please?
Item twenty-two, consideration in action to award a contract for the purchase and delivery of one E N T call box for the Brownsville Police Department.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commissioner. Um, at the request of the Emergency Management and Homeland Security Director, uh, Jeff Johnson, the Purchasing and Contracting Department solicited a proposal from, uh, Cellular Systems of California for the purchase and delivery of one E N T call box for use by the Brownsville Police Department. This procurement is exempt from competitive bidding statutes and shall be considered as a sole source procurement. Um, the Emergency Management and Homeland Security, I mean, and Homeland Security Department has worked together with Cellular Systems of California representatives to select an E N T call box system. This equipment is a self-contained unit that gives the Brownsville Police Department communications, um, access with the hostage taker on a, on a criminal and/or terrorist hostage situations. Uh, this, this equipment is manufactured and solely distributed by Cellular Systems of California, so therefore it is considered a sole source, and, um, that's the reason why, uh, the Purchasing Department did not bid out this, this, uh, particular item. So, uh, we have the consideration in action to award a contract for the purchase and delivery of one E N T call box for use by the Brownsville Police Department to Cellular Systems of California, um, in the amount of twenty thousand three hundred and ninety dollars.
So move.
Second.
Fundly gives in place, and it is being paid by Homeland Security.
Well, maybe I should stay to that, too.
I'm gonna approve.
Is this something good, man? We need it. Okay. We have a motion to, to, um, approve by Commissioner Camarillo, seconded by Commissioner Garza. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries. Item number twenty-five.
Item twenty-five.
Twenty-four, I'm sorry, twenty-four and then twenty-five.
Item twenty-four, consideration in action to award a contract for the purchase and delivery of one new trailer-mounted diesel generator for the Brownsville Public Library.
Okay, um, this was discussed in the executive session also, can we have a motion on this?
I move.
Second.
Okay. You made the motion?
I did.
Okay, Commissioner Garza, seconded by Commissioner Camarillo, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item twenty-five.
Item twenty-five, consideration in action to award a contract for the purchase and delivery of two new Motorola radio repeaters for the Brownsville Police Department Communications Center.
Okay, this was also discussed in the executive session.
I so move.
Commissioner Garza, do we have a second? Second by Commissioner Longoria, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, all opposed? Motion carries. Okay, let's go to twenty-three, then we'll start at the beginning again. Go ahead.
Item twenty-three, consideration in action to award a contract for the purchase and delivery of a rescue support system for the Brownsville Fire Department's heavy rescue team.
So move. Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner, uh, Atkinson, seconded by Commissioner Garza, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, can we do twenty, twenty-one, since he's already up there?
Okay, let's go to, um-
Can we start with item twenty, so we can-
Item twelve?
Twenty.
Okay.
Twenty?
Item twelve?
Twelve or twenty?
Twenty.
Twenty, I'm sorry. Twenty.
Item twenty, consideration in action to award a contract for the purchase and delivery of one medium-duty ultra-low-sulfur diesel lifted equipped transit vehicle for the Brownsville urban system.
Okay, at the request of the Bus Department Director, Norma Zamora, the Purchasing, um, and Contracting Department solicited formal seal bids, uh, for the, uh, for this project. It is intended of the city of Brownsville to replace an old nineteen ninety-eight model transit vehicle by purchasing one new medium-duty, uh, ultra-low-sulfur diesel powered lift-equipped transit vehicle to be used, uh, by the job access, uh, reverse commute routes. The city of Brownsville and Bus, uh, Department is acting as a lead agency in this procurement process and may assign a quantity of the safe transit vehicles to another agencies, okay? And, uh, these other agencies will be responsible for the award of, uh, and selection and issuing individual orders to the successful proposals. The legal advertisement appeared on the Brownsville Herald two times in August the fifth and August twelfth, night, uh, two thousand seven, and was posted on the city website. Two acknowledgements were subsequently received acknowledging an interest in participating in this process. A pre-proposal meeting was conducted on, on August the fifteenth, two thousand seven, at the Purchasing and Contracting Department. No firms were represented at this meeting. Seal proposals were received for the subject project on Wednesday, September the fifth, two thousand seven, at the Purchasing and Contracting Services Department. An evaluation committee was formed consisting of Bus Department staff, Transit Fleet maintenance, City Fleet contract administrator, as well as town, the town of South Patrick Island. A total of two proposals were received and distributed to the Evaluation Committee for review. One meeting was conducted on September eleventh, two thousand seven, to discuss the evaluation process and procedures to independently score the proposals. As a result of this process, the Evaluation Committee determined that these, uh, two proposals were within the competitive range. These two vendors were invited to attend an interview meeting via conference call on September seventeenth, two thousand seven, at the purchasing, uh, conference room. Subsequent to the interview meeting, each of these vendor was afforded to, uh, an opportunity to amend their proposals and make their best and final offers. As a result of the negotiation process, the recommended vendor and the Bus Department have reached a satisfactory working agreement, and, uh, this agreement is attached on the agenda. Based on the successful negotiations with the proposed firm, staff recommends the award of the contract for the purchase and delivery of one medium-duty ultra-low-sulfur diesel-powered lift-equipped transit vehicle and op- and optional components, um, for the Bus Department to national bus sales and lease, uh, incorporated of, uh, Georgia in the amount of a hundred and ten thousand six sixty-four.
Second.
Uh, motion by Commissioner Longoria, seconded by Commissioner Garza, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item twenty-one.
Item twenty-one, consideration in action to award a contract for the purchase of one used hydraulic excavator for the, for the Public Works Department.
At the request of the Public Works Department interim director Santana Torres, the Purchasing and Contracting Department solicited for, formal seal bids for the purchase of one used hydraulic excavator. Um, this excavator, uh, it is to be used by the Streets and Drainage Division. This excavator will be utilized for ditch cleaning and within the city main drainage system. The legal advertisement appeared on the Brownsville Herald one time on August twenty-sixth, two thousand seven, and was posted on the city website. Two acknowledgements were, uh, received acknowledging an interest in, in, uh, participating. A previous meeting was conducted on August thirtieth, two thousand seven. Only one equipment dealer was represented at the bid, uh, previous meeting. An addendum was released to all participating vendors, allowing sufficient time to submit bids. Two, uh, formal bids were opened for the subject project on October the fourth, two thousand seven. A total of two bids were received and tabulated by the Purchasing and Contracting Services Department. Consideration in action toward a contract for the purchase of one used track hydraulic excavator for the Public Works Department to Holcat of West Lico, Texas. The low, the lowest responsible bidder in the amount of seventy-seven thousand two hundred. Now, this, this price includes the following. The base bid price for this, uh, equipment is sixty-six thousand, and it includes an extended warranty of, uh, two additional years or two thousand hours for the power train and the hydraulic system. Fundly gives in place, uh, it is coming from, uh, account fifty-two four eighteen nine forty-two nineteen ninety C O's for machinery and equipment.
Move to approve.
A motion by Commissioner Garza, seconded by Commissioner Longoria, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's go to item nineteen.
Item nineteen, consideration in action to authorize a lease agreement between the city of Brownsville and the Brownsville Affordable Home Ownership Corporation for office space.
Ben.
Item, uh, Mayor and City Commissioners, tonight we're proposing a lease agreement for two years, for a dollar a year for the Brownsville Affordable Home Ownership Corporation, uh, for office space in the planning department. Um, with this lease, the, uh, corporation will use two, uh, ten-by-twelve offices that, uh, that can be utilized by this entity. Uh, uh, this is a, a nonprofit developed by, by the city to utilize home dollars in this community.
Um, Ben, I have a problem with this because it's for one dollar a year, is that right?
That's correct.
Shouldn't it be based on market value?
Well-
And shouldn't, let me ask you this, please, uh, just bear with me. Um, shouldn't they be independent from the city? And they're getting monies from the city, because they are getting monies from the city. Um, they're using, I think, they're getting eight thousand three hundred forty-six per unit that they bill. They're using the copier, probably supplies, and some staff, I don't know, I'm asking you. Um, wasn't the loan servicing employee helping them too along the way? And, um, don't you think, um, the administration operations should be, uh, independent from the city? And shouldn't they be paying fair market value?
Yeah, some of those things are incorrect, sir. Let me ask you, Ben.
Let, let me answer, please.
Okay. Yes, the, they do not use copiers.
Pardon me?
They do not use copiers, they do not use staff, they do not use supplies. Um, this is not-
You told me they use a copier.
No, they do not.
Okay.
And, and we, the city auditor did visit it, uh, or, at my, my invitation, the planning department to, to see the operation, and, and he did go and also talk to, uh, the finance department as well, just to confirm that there is no, uh, employees from the city being utilized on, on this entity. Do you recommend this, Ben? Y- yes, I do, and the, the, the reason why-
But let me ask you, um, when I, when I, um, uh, spoke to the city manager-
I think we got a motion in a, a second.
That's, that's, that's fine, let me ask. Uh, who authorized you to negotiate a contract with these people?
It was not a contract, sir. Basically, we have a-
Or the lease agreement, who authorized you?
We have a memorandum of understanding with the entity today.
Okay.
It hasn't expired. Basically, uh, the, the lease came up because at a meeting with yourself, Mr. Don Curry and Father Frank, they, um, with, with you present, they formulated that there was a con- conflict of interest. Uh, the HUD was called, they, they support this. Um, it's, it's something that we have done in the past, and we have done with other nonprofits that are in the planning department as well today. So, this, it's a, it's a, it's a mechanism to provide affordable housing for a grant that the city is entitled to. It's an entitlement grant, that that's the only way that we can use the money. It has to go to a nonprofit, and they're the only eligible nonprofit today in this community.
But what I don't understand is this, Ben, uh, for the last fiscal year, we provided twenty-two thousand five hundred, okay? According to here, this budget here. And also, we're providing them eight thousand plus per unit. That's, that's wrong?
Right.
For each, for each unit that they, they bill.
But basically, at the beginning, this nonprofit was started by the city from scratch. You know, the, we, we wrote bylaws, they wrote bylaws, they, they developed a committee, and a nonprofit was formed. The eight, the twenty-two thousand were, uh, if, that's, I don't think it was that high, but, but twenty-two thousand was to start off. There was, there was no printer, there was no computer, there was no staffing.
So, we provided those fundings for them, okay?
They, they start up.
Ben, you mentioned that Mr. Don Curry was present at that meeting, and if mine serves me correct and documentation was provided, Don Curry at one time was housed-
That's correct.
Through your office.
And we were paying them, and we were paying-
No, no, let's, let's clarify that, please, Ben, please clarify it.
Clarifying it.
Uh, please clarify how that went about, okay?
Yes, sir, and, and, and let me clarify that. Basically, uh, the, the, the nonprofit, Community Development Corporation of Brownsville, did utilize the whole second floor of our building.
Which was separate from your, it had nothing to do with you.
Neither does this entity.
But that's on the same floor you are, okay? Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead. Well, wait a second, I wanna hear, we need to clarify this.
Basically, when, when the city of Brownsville, uh, bought this building, refurbished it, the regulations prohibit the city from having a department in that building because we use city budget funds. That's very clear in the regulations. HUD allowed the city, back in nineteen eighty-seven, to have the planning department and M I S department in that same building with the understanding that a nonprofit, a housing nonprofit, would utilize the building.
Which we need.
C D C B, yes, exactly. C D C B, for twelve years, ramped up us paying us, uh, operational costs and them getting money from house sales. They eventually, uh, had enough money to go buy their own building. That's the same intent here today.
But they paid for rehabbing the whole building.
No, they did not. They only put some shit rocks in-
Okay, and they were getting zero monies per unit compared to eight thousand three forty-six.
That's correct, because we were paying them operational costs. We're not paying them-
Okay, that is, that's just, we have a, we have a motion, uh-
Do you not want him there?
We have a motion. No, I just think that, I, I think this is not, uh, kosher, in my opinion. I think there's a conflict with your department having them in the same, and I think it puts other, uh, people in the same, uh, business area at a disadvantage when we're just subsidizing them, we're giving seed money, and, and, uh, I think, uh, it leads to maybe impropriety or the appearance of impropriety. But if the commission is, is willing to ignore that, that's fine.
No, we're not ignoring it, Mayor.
There's a conflict when you and Don Curry and other people have a meeting and try to take these people out of there. I think there's a conflict there.
Well, my, my job's to protect the city and get the most return for the city.
Your job is to be a mayor, your job is not to micromanage the city.
We're giving office space free, okay, to an entity that's getting eight thousand three hundred forty-six per unit. We're giving them access to a, a, a city department on the same floor that's funding them. I find that to be in conflict.
Ben, are they taking back office?
And also, uh, uh, somebody's going there negotiating a lease without any authorization from anybody. I find that, I think we should get market rate for this office space, and he should be apart from the city.
I think that we have staff-
But that's fine, Commissioner.
I think we have staff that's capable of doing that, and the mayor of Brownsville should not be getting involved-
Point well taken.
In making those kinds of decisions.
You made your point, okay. We have, uh, uh-
Micromanaging.
Again, my motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Sisneros, uh, seconded by Commissioner Camarillo. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. Sometimes it's good to be alone.
Need to get away from micromanaging.
Stand up for his right. Okay, um-
Item eighteen.
Let's go to, the next-
Do you wanna finish, item eighteen for finishing?
Let's go back to the regular, I was trying to accommodate everybody, need to get out. Let's go back to item three and go them down, please. Consent agenda items.
Consent agenda items, A through H.
Okay, this, uh, this, okay. We have a motion by Commissioners Longoria, seconded by Commissioner Camarillo. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item four.
Item four, consideration in action to appoint or reappoint citizens to the Brownsville Citizens Advisory Committee.
Okay, I, I wanna appoint Ben Salinas and Rose Art.
Second.
Okay.
What was that name, man?
What?
The name, please.
Ben Salinas and Rose Art. Okay, they're retired people. We have a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries.
I have a, I have an appointment, I'd like to, uh, appoint, um, William Anderson.
William who?
Willie Anderson. That's-
Second.
Thank you, Ben.
Okay, motion by, uh, Commissioner Sisneros, seconded by Commissioner, uh, Atkinson, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Longoria has two, uh, two appointments.
Yes, I wanna appoint Mr. Rigzaias and Marisol with a Y.
Second, second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Longoria, seconded by Commissioner, uh, Sisneros. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries. Okay, is there any more appointments?
I think I have an appointment.
Oh, he has one too.
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, appoint, uh, Robert Galindo. He is a part owner of, um, uh, Amigo Pawn Shops. He's from Brownsville, this is, man.
Very good man.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor, uh, motion by Commissioner Garza and seconded by Commissioner Camarillo, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
I have two, right, or one?
One.
The other one, what is, is it I will, or can I just change them out both now or not?
Yes, you can.
Okay, I'd like to make my appointments. Uh, the first one would be, um- Okay, I'd like to make my appointments, uh, the first one would be, um, Mary Tolman. And the second would be Laura Garcia Cackley.
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Atkinson, seconded by Commissioner Camarillo, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Are there any more? That's it, okay. Next item, please.
Item five, consideration in action to appoint or reappoint five members and four alternate members to the Board of Adjustment.
Is that not in our here?
Good evening, uh, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Commission, the Board of Adjustment was created by the City Zoning Ordinance Number Two Thirty-Five, Section Seventeen, as described under the Section Three Eleven Point Zero Zero Eight of the Local Government Code. Uh, consists of five regular members, four alternates, each member, alternate shall be appointed by the City Commission, two-year terms. And the purpose of the committee shall be to hear and decide appeals, to hear and decide special exceptions, authorize special K G S A variants. The concurrent vote of seventy-five percent of the members of the vote is necessary. Uh, and also, the meeting time and place is the Board of Adjustment Appeals meets first Wednesday of each month, six P M. here at City Hall, City Chambers. And the quorum consists of four, uh, voting members.
May I just?
How many positions do we have to fill?
Uh, they're all, uh, the terms have expired, I did, uh, submit a, uh.
You did talk to, I'm sorry, Mr. Gamas, you did talk to everyone and they said, uh, they wish to be reappointed?
Except for two, sir.
Except for two.
Yes, and I think the, I think you have a.
Yeah, we have it. Commissioner.
Mr. Gamas, on mine, the Oscar Garcia, I need a, I'm still waiting for him to get back, could be.
Sir?
On mine, my appointment last time was Oscar Garcia, I'm still waiting for him to get back, I'll need to confirm, so I'm gonna.
Who are the two that are in now?
The, the only ones that we not get in touch, uh, Commissioner Atkinson, it was, uh, Oscar Garcia and Gabriel Garcia. Uh, Oscar Garcia, uh, their phones that he gave us are no longer working, and we tried to get a call him, they're at work, he no longer works there.
Okay.
Okay, and the other person, uh, was never sworn in, uh, so if you wanna.
The only alternates are available.
Correct, correct, the, uh, regular members are all, they, yes, they want to be reappointed.
And you didn't contact Mr. Gabriel Garcia, or he was never sworn in, it says here?
Uh, correct.
Let me ask you something.
Didn't wanna.
Correct.
He never showed up to a meeting?
Uh, he wa- yeah, he, when he was supposed to be sworn in, he would never showed up, so that's why, uh, just. Now, you wanna.
I'll nominate, um, Mike Garza as an alternate.
Second.
So, we have a motion by Commissioners Sisneros for Mike Garza and seconded by Commissioner Camarillo.
To replace, uh, Gabriel Garcia, I guess.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries. Is there another one?
I'll move to, uh, appoint Eddie Sykes as a, uh, alternate.
Second.
We have a motion, uh, to appoint Eddie Sykes, uh, by Commissioner Traiani, seconded by Commissioner Sisneros, all in favor?
As an alternate.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Is there any more?
Any more appointments?
Would you need for us to either approve board members, the actual board members, one by one, or a slate, or how would you like it?
Uh, Jim Glazer, how does?
If the vote's gonna be the same, you can do them all at once, but, uh, if, if there's a, if one person wants one person but doesn't want the other person, that's where you get in trouble, it's probably simpler to do it individually.
Everyone has good attendance, Mr.?
Also, I need to know if you're appointing some new members, who are you replacing on the list of those that wish to be seen? I have these two, but there's, there's already another person, you have Mike Garza and you have to replace Gabe Garcia and Ed Sykes to replace.
Or Gabriel Garcia. I have Mike Garza for Gabriel Garcia.
Is Ed, Ed Sykes replacing, uh, Gabriel Garcia or Oscar Garcia?
No, I got Mike Garza, uh, for Gabriel Garcia.
Okay, and then, uh.
I guess we're gonna have to replace Oscar Garcia.
Now, is Oscar Garcia, you were saying it was waiting to confirm?
Next week, I need a, I would like.
But he's on too many boards, he'll understand, man.
You want to table it?
I want to table it, at least give the respect.
I don't mind, uh, I'll give you the courtesy.
Yeah.
Appreciate the commission.
I'll re, I'll, uh, just remove my motion, uh, my second on that one.
Okay, so we have a motion to table?
Yeah.
So, I'll table that.
On.
Commissioner Atkinson is, is tabling?
No, uh, Traiani.
I mean, Traiani, I'm sorry.
Troyani, yes.
And seconded by Commissioner, uh, Camarillo, all in favor to table?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries.
If nobody has opposition, or did you want to?
I, I wanted to, uh, nominate or appoint Joyce Brown.
And who would replace who?
Sir Wallace Garcia.
That's mine.
Okay, never mind.
Okay.
Okay, so then you withdraw your motion, let me ask you something, do, I know it's, it's consensus, but who, these appointments, why, why don't we just table the whole thing, y'all come together and make a.
I mean, I'm ready to nominate mine, that's not a problem.
But they're, they're always.
You want to renominate yours, right?
If you already contacted everybody.
Everybody's serving, right, I mean, everybody's showing up to the meetings and, and they're an active, active participant?
Correct.
And they want to participate again?
Correct.
Well, then, I mean, I, I think that's.
I made the motion to reappoint, uh, the members.
Second.
I'd like to give her an opportunity.
You, you want to reappoint the slate?
Yeah, the slate, you've already contacted everybody, they have good attendance and they all do wish to be reappointed.
The ones that we contacted, the ones that want to be reappointed, yes, they want to serve again.
The only ones you couldn't.
For the exception of the two.
Gabriel and Oscar were the only two that you could not get a hold of.
Table the ones that have been replaced, so.
Correct.
I made the motion to reappoint the.
They're alternates.
Right.
Okay, City Secretary, you got that straight, I got, okay?
You want to, you want to point all the, the slate of, of.
Yeah, except that one that Commissioner Camarillo asked to be tabled.
We have a motion by Commissioner Sisneros.
Okay, we have a, uh, Commissioner Sisneros makes a motion, seconded by Commissioner Camarillo, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, to reappoint the slate.
So, as far as the alternates now, Ismael Inohosa, who, who is he?
Who?
He's an alternate.
Ismael Inohosa. Ismael H. Inohosa is an alternate?
Has he gone to the meetings, have he still?
Oh, no, no, sir, uh, he's an alternate, so he random, uh, randomly goes to the meetings.
I think he has a, he wants to make an appointment to appoint Joyce Brown for, for an alternative to replace Ismael Inohosa, and I'm gonna second it.
Or is that Israel Gomez?
Israel H. Inohosa.
We have an Ismael.
Okay, make up your minds, Ismael Inohosa or Israel Gomez, which one do you want to replace?
Ismael Inohosa.
Okay, we have a motion by, uh, Commissioner, uh, Garza for Joyce Brown to replace, uh, Mr. Inohosa, and seconded by Commissioner Atkinson, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries. Just be sure to notify these people what's happened, okay, so that they're not blindsided.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Gamas, I just, just for clarification, Ismael Inohosa's on the top, but he's not on the appointment list.
It does, the, the second page.
He's an alternate.
Go to the next page.
He's an al- he's, he's one of the three alternates.
He's an alternate, Commissioner Longoria.
That's fine.
Okay, okay, the next item.
What do they have here, yeah?
Oh, item six.
Thank you.
Public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number two thousand and seven dash eleven hundred point forty-four, amending the city code to clarify the relationship between the Capital Improvement Advisory Committee and other entities and dealing with related matters, including five hundred dollar penalties.
Uh, this action on the, uh, ordinance we went over in the workshop, it's first reading. Uh, the changes that, uh, reflect the addition of, uh, three members to make a total of ten instead of seven, as there were before this ordinance.
Okay, let's go one by one.
Would you like to table it so y'all can get together and, and, uh, come up with a next meeting, no?
No.
Okay, we have, go ahead.
I want to keep it seven members with a quorum of four.
Do you want to make each one of these separate motions as we go through, or how do you want to handle it? So, I would second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Nay. Go ahead, your next.
Okay.
Also like to delete the language, keeping, giving the kayak the opportunity to choose their own chair from within.
We want the kayak to choose their own chair from within, correct?
Correct.
I'll second that.
Okay, uh, Commissioner, uh, Longoria and seconded by Commissioner Atkinson, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries.
We do have an issue, though, if we're gonna bring it down to seven, who is gonna be?
I'm sure he'll get to it.
Who?
I'm sure he'll get to it. Don't worry.
I don't know, I just.
I think we should reappoint each other.
Why don't we have a, uh, and I'm just, just a discussion, uh.
What's the next issue?
What do we, I had one representative, what if, uh, we'd go one by one and each Commissioner and the mayor each up.
That's a good idea.
One person.
Commissioner?
That way, we all have a representative and on the kayak and it's, um.
Hmm.
But the next change. Okay, uh, the next change, uh, involved allowing for a simple majority vote of the kayak to adopt and enforce kayak rules as pre- as previously promulgated by the ordinance of the City Commission. For the purposes of more, uh, efficiently carrying out its duties, as opposed to a five, a five vote, excuse me, supermajority, uh, doing that.
What subsection was that under?
That is under three fourteen twenty-one J.
Okay.
The question I have is, right now, it's a supermajority, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and so, if we keep the supermajority, basically, they're gonna follow the, the rules that we've already set out, and they would have to have a supermajority in order to deviate from that, correct?
That's my understa- yes.
Okay, well, I would actually say to leave that, that in place would be my recommendation.
Second.
Okay, Commissioner, uh, Traiani, uh, makes a motion and seconded by Commissioner Longoria, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
The next change under three hundred twenty-nine B one, uh, each member of the body, uh, shall reside in the city's E T J, except one member, I'm sorry. Reside inside the city's territorial jurisdiction, except for one member needs to reside within the extraterritorial jurisdiction.
Let me ask you, if we're seven, one of us is gonna have to appoint that E T J.
Some, some of the members will have to be from real estate, or forty percent of the seven.
I think most of them are.
I'm just saying, that's in the statute, the E T J and the percentage of people involved in real estate is statutory.
I like your idea, just everybody have their own and let's go, see where it falls, 'cause at least I have my representative there, you have your representative, he can talk to and see where it's going, you have your own.
But where does this put those with, with, um, that one person that needs to be outside of the?
Would be the at-large?
Well, I thi- I think, I think the E T J, everybody agree, uh, Pastor Alvarez, uh, would be a good choice.
You want that one?
No, I'm just telling you, I think everybody, that's the seven, that's the seven.
I know that, speaking before we get to it, my appointment would be the person that would cover the Nora Pampa, in other words, she's a Realtor. I would, I would make.
That's a good choice.
When we, when we keep that one, I would, I would nominate Nora, that way, we're in compliance with that one, that would be my, my representative on the kayak.
So, write it down, you have Nora Pampa.
Wait till we get to that, when, when we get to that, we'll approve.
Hold it up there.
Okay, well, right now, I'll move to keep the E T, E T J requirement, because that's part of the, the requirements for the, the kayak, correct?
Statute three ninety-five.
Correct, yeah.
And so, let's, keep moving.
Seconding his motion.
Okay, we have a motion by, um, Commissioner Traiani to keep the E T J requirement, which is required by statute three ninety-five, and seconded by Commissioner, uh, Sisneros, uh, Longoria, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries, okay?
Under three hundred thirty-seven, uh, it dictate, it, uh, provides that the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee does not adopt rules for the efficient transaction of its business, rather that the City Commission does.
I would suggest that they adopt Robert's Rules of Order for their, for their conduct. Second.
I.
You have a motion by Commissioner.
That wasn't the issue.
Longoria.
I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry, but could you restate it, just so that we can hear that again?
Sure, uh, three hundred thirty-seven provides that, uh, instead of the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee adopting rules for the efficient transaction of its business, that the City Commission does that.
Oh, sorry.
You take, take it from.
That's what we're doing right now, so I would move to.
Second. So, we have a motion by Commissioner Long- Commissioner Atkinson, seconded by, who?
Traiani.
Traiani Garcia.
Who made the motion?
Traiani.
It's Traiani, who seconded it?
I did.
Leo Garcia.
Leo Garcia, okay, seconded by Leo Garcia, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. I prefer the committee to do that, okay, next.
Would you want appointments, or?
Uh, yeah.
The rest of the language that's highlighted in here, like in chapter three hundred dash one, just changing terminology around, that's just standard, but do you need action on that?
Approve everything.
That's what I had assumed, is that we'd go through.
Ordinance with changes?
Each item and then pass the ordinance as a whole with the, with the corrections and changes.
Do, do we need to, uh, dissolve the, the current standing kayak to reappoint, so we all can have an appointment, or what do we need to do? Okay.
Can you talk a little louder, can you just carry?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Megaphone.
Okay. Basically, the procedures is really the mechanism of the ordinance that gives instructions to the kayak of how they're gonna operate, basically, uh, it, it first begins with the identification of the members. In this case, we have ten, um, which we're gonna reduce to seven, it, it talks about the terms of the members, vacancies, how they will be filled, the officers, presiding officer, meetings, where the meetings will be held, uh, voting, conflict of interest. And then, it, uh, most importantly, of this, is section two, which really outlines the duties of the advisory committee, that's your charge to them, and this really outlines the work, and let me go over them. There's, there's really five, five, uh, actions, and one is to advise the City Commission in adopting the land use assumptions, that has been completed by the planning staff, forwarded to, to the P U B staff. Um, we're currently reviewing it, uh, but the final document has been produced. Secondly, review the capital improvements plan and file written comments to you, to the commission, monitor and evaluate implementation of the capital improvements, once they've adopted a plan and you have adopted a fee, you know they're gonna monitor it. And then, file semi-annual reports with respect to the progress of the capital improvements plan and report to the City Commission of any perceived inequities in implementing the plan or imposing the impact fee. And lastly, advise the City Commission of the need to update or revise the land use assumptions, capital improvements plan, and impact fee, so this will be an ongoing system.
Okay, based on that scope of work, I change my vote, uh, Stella to a yea, okay?
On?
Based on that scope of work.
On which part?
On the part of policies and procedures, uh, established by the city.
Oh, okay.
And then, um, it mentions that, uh, approval, adoption of the amendment or repeal of procedure rules, this is all compliant with the chapter of the three ninety-five, which outlines the procedures of the kayak, and this is basically copied from statute and post here. So, really, the basic task and the main task tonight, um, and lastly, is the, how many, you said, seven members, so, okay, so how are you gonna select the seven members, is, I guess, what, uh, Commissioner, um, Sisneros was alluding to. But, uh, you know, you know that you have to have an E T J member, and that's Pastor Alvarez, so I guess everybody agrees with that, uh, so, so then, how do you proceed to the other six members? The first that were appointed.
Well, I'll move to, uh, reappoint Pastor Alvarez as the E T J member at this time.
I'll second.
As an alternate?
So, that's one.
Oh, no.
As the E T J member.
I'm, I guess I'll go next.
I'll second.
Oh.
Oh, we gotta do one.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Atkinson, seconded by Commissioners Sisneros, uh, I'm sorry, Traiani, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries.
I'll go second, um, I'll move to appoint David Ben Court for my, my, my pick.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Atkinson, seconded by Commissioner Sisneros, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries.
Mayor, I'm gonna point Mark Spata.
Hold on, let's go down.
I move to appoint Karen Ballard.
Okay, we have a motion for Karen Ballard.
Second.
Okay, second by Commissioner Sisneros, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all emotion, emotion, anybody opposed, motion carries. Okay, I make a motion to appoint myself for, and behalf of the P U B board as, uh, approved by the board.
Mayor, I think the P U B, um, we should have a representative, I think the ex-official already, Mr. John Brusziak, and Ben Medina.
Well, I thought we were gonna allow each member to make their own appointment, you want to change the rules?
I don't, well.
I mean.
No, I don't want you to rule, but I'm not gonna make a motion to appoint myself.
Well, I mean, I'm on the P U B board.
Well, I guess we're set for a vote, now he needs to se- he needs to get a second for his motion.
I make the motion.
I'll second it, but.
I make the motion to appoint myself, as I have been nominated and appoint, approved by the P U B board to serve in the kayak committee, seconded by Commissioner Atkinson, all in favor?
Nay.
Aye, all opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Make it known, okay, four, uh, nays, Commissioner Garza, Longoria, Sisneros, uh, Camar- uh, Camarillo, and Atkinson, okay. So, I guess I get no appointment. Okay, Commissioner Longoria.
You're getting a point.
You're gonna appoint someone, though, Mayor.
You're gonna appoint someone, though, mayor.
Yeah, Commissioner Longoria.
You got Leon Greer.
You wanna appoint Commissioner Longoria?
Uh, Commissioner Longoria, I'm gonna give him a choice to, to go ahead and appoint.
I move to nominate Ms., uh, Nora Pampa, so that we can comply with, um, what is that been?
Uh, the forty percent of real estate and development industries.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Longoria, seconded by Commissioner, uh, Sisneros. All in favor? Camarillo, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Now, Commissioner Sisneros, you have your turn.
I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Rick Syas.
Okay, we have a motion to appoint Mr. Rick Syas by Commissioner Sisneros, seconded by Commissioner Troyani. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Commissioner Camarillo.
I'd like to appoint Monsieur Mark Sparsa.
Mark who?
Sparsa.
Sparsa.
Second.
We have a motion by, uh, Commissioner Camarillo to appoint Mr. Sparsa, and seconded by Mr. Atkinson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries.
Do we have one more?
I will, uh, move to appoint-
Guy, I don't have a vote here, apparently, so-
Well, if the mayor wants to appoint somebody, that's fine.
Le- I, Leon Greer.
Go ahead.
No, you guys-
I'm moving to appoint Leon Greer.
You guys don't wanna give me the vote, so do, do it yourself.
He seconded.
Okay, we have a motion for, uh, by Commissioner Atkinson, uh, to approve, uh, to appoint Leon Greer, and seconded by Commissioner-
Camarillo.
Camarillo.
Camarillo. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. It goes to show how, how fair this commission is, but that's okay.
We gave you the option, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, they're not hurting me. They're hurting the city themselves, but that's okay.
We gave you the option.
Let's go to the next item, please. You wanna play politics, Commissioner, play politics with the city, all you want.
Can we vote on the ordinance?
Pardon me?
Can we vote on the ordinance?
Okay.
Yes, uh, before the vote, it is a public hearing, and maybe somebody from the audience would like-
Okay, does anybody have a-
It's a move.
Uh, motion to close a public hearing. Moved by Commissioner Garza, seconded by Commissioner, uh, Troyani. All in favor?
Aye.
Close the public hearing, okay? Aye, um, motion to approve the ordinance.
It's a move.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Garza, seconded by Commissioner Troyani. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Okay, next item.
Item seven, public hearing and action on first reading of ordinance number two thirty-five dash two thousand and seven dash zero zero two dash F A to allow a professional office, retail, daycare, professional beauty salon, and a space for dry cleaners in a dwelling zoning, dwelling zone for lot three, block one of Diamond Point Two, located near Alton Glor and Tandy Road.
Okay, before we go on to the next deal, um, on this last, the one before, um, I hope the citizens pay attention exactly what's going on here, because you will have a choice to make a difference come election day. Thank you. Next item.
Mayor, that's, that's playing politics.
That is, that applies to all-
That's okay, you're playing politics with me, I get to play politics with you. I, I hold the chair and I can speak. You're out of order. Now, you're at the next item, go ahead. Public hearing, do you have a public hearing?
Real quick, before we do that, um, I got a text message from Oscar Garcia. He said he'll stay on. If you wanna do that now, I move to-
No, we're already, already in the next item. We're on this next item, we can go back and open it up if you'd like after we finish this item, okay? We have a public hearing.
Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners, um, um, this is the property shaded in red here. This is Alton Glor, uh, the expressway, uh, there's a railroad, the expressway is over here, two eighty-one, over here. Uh, basically, this case did come to you about, um, three weeks ago. Uh, basically, at this point, it's an amendment to an existing specific use. In this particular case, the applicant, um, was approved through a specific use, a building. He wants to enlarge that building to allow more businesses, as were read in the, in the call. The applicant did meet with, uh, members of the community, his neighbors, and both he and, and members of the neighborhood did come up with specific, uh, conditions that will be included in the, in the, uh, in the action. And there's eighteen conditions that will, um, that will go along with this application. So it is a public hearing.
Okay, it's a public hearing. Any, any, uh, for or against comments?
The conditions then are what?
Uh, wanna read all eighteen?
Well, I, I didn't see them on.
Okay, I, I can. Okay, um-
Quickly, I mean.
The, the building to be single-story, as shown on the site plan, with slope roof and design, including colors to blend well with the residential neighborhood, single entrance to the parking lot, an eight-foot-high masonry privacy fence along the entire length of the north property line, additional landscaping barriers to provide for property above residential property line, landscaping and trees to be provided at the front of the site in order to minimize the view of the parked cars from the street. Parking lot lights to be a maximum of twelve feet, uh, to fourteen feet in height, and to be baffled to direct light inward only. Building light fixtures at the rear and side elevations to shine downward only, no mercury vapor lights. All electrical and service utilities lines to be underground, signage to be low-profile and discreetly lit, as shown on the site plan. No ne- no neon or flashing lights, no garnish colors or vulgar imagery. Uh, noise levels must be maintained as per residential neighborhood requirements during construction and operation of all businesses. Construction activities will not take place during late hours. Businesses are limited as per specific use approval. There will be no restaurant or liquor sales or consumption. Operation, operating hours for businesses to be limited from eight AM to nine PM with no businesses open on Sundays. Professional clothing services, second commercial conditional use permit for a maximum of three thousand square feet of area, and only for walk-in, drop-off, and pickup of cleaning clothing, of clean clothing, no drive-through window. Organic food stores, second commercial conditional use permit for two thousand square feet of area on the southeast point of the building. Daycare center, one, first commercial conditional use permit for five thousand square feet of area on the northeast point of the building. Professional beauty shop, second commercial conditional use permit for a maximum of three thousand square feet of area, including all, including and not limited to site plan, specific use appendix. Any of the above conditional specific uses can al- can not be replaced for another professional, other than a professional office. Those are part of the application.
Okay, it's a public hearing. Can we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I believe we have some people from the public that would like to comment.
You have, you have people who want to speak, okay, come forward, please.
Number seven.
Mayor, Commissioner, I just have one question regarding this and one concern, and that is, um, exactly, uh, how many square feet would be designated for professional offices, since the, uh, original intent was for specific use professional offices, and in the amendment, including professional offices. And here we have, uh, specifics, square footage for the additional uses. And I would just be, uh, interested to know how many square feet are designated for professional offices as well, so that it would be part of the record.
Ben, you have that input?
Well, the, what we're trying to do here is, is be specific with the businesses that the applicant wants and, and specific, um, uh, square footages for those particular businesses. If he cannot get a specific, a business, a dry cleaner, for example, then no other use can go in that besides another professional office. So, so that's, that, that question was never brought up, but what the questions that were brought up, we tried to address with the specific businesses that, well, there are, there, any other available space would be a professional office.
So even at this point, though, there's no, um, it's not, uh, it's not set that there's gonna be a beauty salon at this point?
No, there isn't, but if, but-
But the option would be that there would be.
And a maximum, and a maximum size, uh, space.
Okay.
Do you recommend this?
Yes, I do.
Okay, are you for or against? Please, uh, state your name and your position and whatever you want.
Uh, we appreciate Mr. Garcia. He's been, you know, uh, uh, he does nice work with Diamond Point. It's just that, uh, we, I guess, I would like to know, are there going to be professional offices in this, on this site as, uh, per the specific use application, or is it only gonna be for the other uses? I mean, it, the specific uses for professional offices with additional uses, I'm, I'm just asking. Are there gonna be professional offices and other uses, or other uses and no professional offices?
Ben, uh, ma'am, would you state your name, please?
She was already up.
The question she posed?
I am sorry, I didn't hear the question.
You, okay.
It's, it's, it's all professional office, and if he can get a beauty salon for that size, then you subtract that from the professional offices. So, so it, we can't really say right now.
Is this the same land that we're gonna, that Con's Grill trying to come in?
No.
I think what, what our prob- what we're concerned is that we're authorizing offices here, and because they have other there, it could be a nightclub.
No, no.
Or, or all other, it could be something else.
No, because the, we would-
The zoning explains-
Professional office, that's the base zoning, professional office, with special use permit for the beauty salon, the organic food store, and those are the only things that will be there. There's, will be, other than professional office, only what I read here as the uses.
Only the specific variants?
Yes.
All right, next, who else is next?
Mayor, Commissioner, my name is Roberto Ruiz. I happen to be a neighbor to the, uh, the property here. I'm in favor for this. Uh, uh, what we have done is met with Mr. Garcia, and as you all may know, this has been a hot issue over the period of time. But I think as, as time has gone on, the neighborhood has leaned more to working with, uh, people like this under special use. And I seriously consider that, um, or for y'all to consider any time in the near future, any type of other developments that may come in front of you, that a specific use is really the way to go, rather than go to rezone change, as we did with Mr. Caballero and the, the property you're talking about later. So I think this is, uh, a method for the neighborhood to be together and, and the developers to come in under specific use in these guidelines. And I think, uh, I commend Mr. Garcia for doing that, and the PNC for, for doing it, and the planning commission.
Thank you, Mr. Ruiz.
Thank you.
Okay. Any more, any more, or do we close the public hearing?
I believe there's one more.
Ms. Miller.
Hi, my name is Sergeant Miller, and I'm here from the Legwee subdivision. And of course, Mr. Camarillo is my representative. And I just wanna tell you, thank you very much for, uh, taking care of this matter, if you can consider the specific word. Thank you, and thank you all.
Thank you.
Move to close, again, to close by Commissioner Atkinson, and seconded by who to close the public hearing?
Second.
Commissioner Camarillo. All in favor to close, uh, public hearing?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries.
Move to approve with the, uh, specific use.
Motion by Commissioner Camarillo for specific use, and seconded by Commissioner Atkinson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Next item, please.
Item number eight, public hearing and action on first reading of ordinance number two thirty-five dash two thousand and seven dash zero twenty-nine dash S to allow a specific use in a light retail G classification for an auto body shop for lot one, block one, out of Ernesto Cortez subdivision, located near FM five eleven and Prescott Lane.
Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners, uh, this is the property shaded in red. This is eight oh three, the expressway, and then five eleven here. Uh, this is a specific use, um, to allow a body shop on this property. The planning zoning commission voted unanimously to approve this recommendation to you.
Okay, um, we have, um, somebody here wants to speak on, for or against, please come forward, state your name.
My name, my name is Oscar Gonzalez. I happen to be, uh, right the next door neighbor. I have, uh, previously missed the past two meetings, uh, one of them because I was out of town, and the other one, I just, uh, did not acknowledge, and by the time I realized, it was already too late. The only thing that I have to say, I don't have nothing against it happening. The only thing that I have against is that, um, there, when, when there has been painting, the, being done, it, and the wind just blows right into my backyard, and I do happen to dwell there. Um, that is one concern. And the other concern is, um, I, I do have vehicles, and my newer vehicles are the ones that really matter, um, what's being done as far as overspray. Um, because when they painted the, the, the water tower behind us, um, all of my vehicles got oversprayed by that, but they were older vehicles, and I really did not acknowledge that. I, you know, that's basically it. To be able to kinda like put you in my shoes, uh, I'm sure that there's gonna be quite a bit of painting there. And, uh, if you, kinda like to give you a, an example, it'd be like having your, your mosquito, uh, spraying, you know, three times a week, it's gonna create a nuisance and-
Aren't they supposed to have some kind of, uh, room?
I don't know if that's being met or not. I, I know that they painted there several times.
Let's find out, maybe your issue will be addressed. Aren't they supposed to have a confined area to, to where he's not exposed to those-
They have a-
Possibilities?
They have a building, there's a site plan, um, if you could put the site plan, uh-
They'll have a paint room. Would that satisfy you, to where it'll be contained, it, it won't, it won't be subject to the breeze, uh, scattering that paint to your area? Would that be okay with you?
I know that, that, um, TCEQ, um, it's a, it's a state agency that, that, uh, confines them to, to certain regulations of what they need to specify for a shop like that. If they comply with that, and, and the fumes are not there, I really don't have a problem with it.
Okay.
Uh, that's basically it. Uh, I know that, that there've been some painting there, and kinda like sort of getting it off the ground, but the standards is-
They shouldn't have been doing that. They shouldn't be doing that.
Ben, do we have a-
That's basically it, you know, I-
Yeah, but they shouldn't be painting without the, the, the zoning applied to them, now, uh-
And that's really, that's really what, what brought me here. Other than that, I mean, if I had not-
And your concerns are very valid. Your concerns are very valid. But we have assurances here from the planning, uh, department director, Ben Medina, that they will have a paint room, and this will not happen. If it does happen, they're subject to fines, okay? And maybe even closing down the business, right?
Yes, right.
Okay. Based on that, you know, I will support that, if you're okay with that. You're okay with that? Okay.
It does address that? We do address that, Ben?
Yeah, they have to present a site plan, everything-
Site plan is there. They do have a paint building. Uh, the cars should be painted inside that building.
And then building inspections would be involved to give, issue a C O, to make sure that, you know, it's gonna be done, and, you know, that they're-
If they don't abide by that, please call us and file a complaint. Call me directly, if you want to, okay?
The paint is already up, and, and they do have two ventilations going towards the back, which brings the wind right around and, and into my backyard.
To your backyard.
So you're saying that right now, they're already using the building, and the vents from the building are taking everything into your property?
If you have any problem, please file the complaint, and let him know, let's imagine, or call me, you know, and we'd be more than happy to take a look at it, okay?
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Oh, thank you for coming. Thank you for coming.
Move to close, some move-
Motion to close the public hearing by Commissioner Atkinson, seconded by Commissioner Sisneros.
Aye.
All in favor to close public hearing?
Aye.
Motion carries. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay, this is a consideration and action item, um-
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Camarillo.
Second.
And Commissioner, sec- seconded by Commissioner Sisneros. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Based on those conditions we outlined, uh, Ben. Okay, the next one, please.
Item nine, public hearing and action on first reading of ordinance number two thirty-five dash two thousand and seven dash zero forty-five to rezone from dwelling Z to dwelling F classification, lots thirteen and fourteen of block sixteen, out of Barreda Gardens subdivision, located near FM fourteen twenty-one and US two eighty-one.
Um, Honorable Mayor, this is fourteen twenty-one, uh, here, this is the property shaded in red. Um, this is to, um, downzone from a dwelling Z, uh, classification, whose nine thousand square foot lots, to dwelling F, uh, which are six thousand square foot lots. Um, the planning zoning commission voted, uh, unanimously to approve this recommendation to you.
Okay, this is a public hearing.
Move to close public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion to close by Commissioner Longoria, seconded by Commissioner Sisneros. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Wait, wait a second. You want to speak? Okay, can you withdraw your motion?
Withdraw my motion.
Okay, motion withdrawn. Please proceed. Mr. Chavez, please state your name. Next time, you gotta get up quicker.
Madam members of the City Commission of City of Brownsville, my name is Ariel Chavez. I'm a designated representative, uh, of the owners of this, uh, property, uh, the owner- Uh, the owners is a nonprofit, uh, named, uh, Hacienda West Phase One L L C. Um, and, uh, they, uh, are obviously planning to, uh, comply with every requirement that the city, um, um, is, uh, imposes on them, and, and, uh, and will apply to the project. Um, we, uh, are, uh, we've already held some meetings with some of, uh, city staff members to try to make sure that all concerns are addressed. So, uh, if you have any questions on this, you know, we would like for you obviously to favorably look upon this, um, as, as did the planning zoning commission. So any questions that you might have, I'm the city engineer for the project, and also designated representative.
Move to close.
Second.
Uh, motion to close by Commissioner Longoria, seconded by Commissioner Cisneros, all in favor to close?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries. This is the action item.
Move to approve? Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Longoria, seconded by Commissioner Cisneros, all in favor?
Camarillo.
Camarillo, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries.
Item ten, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number two thirty-five dash two thousand and seven dash zero forty-six dash S. To allow a light commercial specific use, auto, used auto sales in a general retail classification for lot seven, block six, of East Brownsville addition, section one subdivision, located near Southmost Road and International Boulevard.
Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners, this is the property shaded in red, it's on Southmost, uh, it's, will be for a used car lot. Planning zoning commission voted, uh, unanimously to approve this recommendation to you.
Move to close.
Second.
Motion to close by Commissioner Longoria, seconded by Commissioner Camarillo, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries. Action item?
Move to approve? Second.
Okay. Approved by Commissioner Longoria, seconded by Commissioner Camarillo, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries. Next item, please.
Item eleven, public hearing in action to approve a class L permit, number C L two thousand and seven dash zero zero two, to allow a game arcade at six twenty Parada Slade Road, Brownsville, Texas.
Honorable Mayor, uh, City Commissioner, this is for, uh, um, an arcade, a game room, um, on, on Parada Slade Road, uh, near Price Road. Uh, in this particular case, the applicant is applying for eighty machines. Uh, will have three employees, and their operations will be from ten A.M. to four A.M. Uh, no alcohol approaches, of course, will be served. Uh, this is a class L to allow a arcade on this property.
Okay, this is a public hearing, anybody for or against?
Move to close.
Second.
Motion to close by Commissioner Longoria, seconded by Commissioner Cisneros, all in favor to close?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries.
Uh, I know there's one very close to that area, and, yeah, that's right. This is going to be right in front of a park. What I want to do is maybe table this, to get more information on, on an ordinance that we're trying to do as far as how far they, these, these things can be from each other, I don't know. But I'd like to table it if we can.
We just hosted a public hearing, um, where's the city attorney?
Just to table it, just to...
Can we just table it?
There's, there's, I've been getting calls, and there's, there's some conflict there, and I'd like to rectify that if we can.
Procedurally, Mayor, you can close the, close the public hearing, you can reopen that, but you can table the action item and continue to...
I'd like to table the action.
But we have to continue then? Can we withdraw, or say, let's see? Let me, let, how, how do you handle this?
Public hearing has been...
Well, he can move to close, table it.
I'm asking the, the city attorney, okay?
Public hearing has been held and has been closed. Table the action until the subsequent...
So we don't have to have another public hearing? Okay. Okay, we have a motion to table the action portion of the item by Commissioner Atkinson, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Traiani, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries. One nay, Commissioner Longoria. Nay, to table. Okay, uh, um, item twelve, action items?
Item twelve, pub-, uh, consideration and action on resolution number two thousand and seven dash zero fifty-seven to support an application for a municipal setting designation for nineteen hundred Billy Mitchell Boulevard.
Mayor, members of the commission, the city commission has asked to pass a resolution establishing this district municipal setting designation at nineteen hundred Billy Mitchell Boulevard. This is on the south side of Billy Mitchell, at the Brownsville International Airport. The building is, the building is owned by a separate tenant that is on City of Brownsville property that, uh, under the terms of a long-term lease. Seventeen years ago, a company by the name of Ranko was one of the tenants for the building owner in the building. They did plastic injection molding. What happened was they used solvents in order to clean up stuff. They had a spill with some chemical solvents. That solvent percolated into the ground and, within a space of about fifty feet underneath the building and surrounding it. They are now in the process of pursuing a cleanup of that, one with the Texas Council on Environmental Quality. One of the things they have to do is seek an M S D designation from the City of Brownsville as the property owner. They've gone through the process, a whole series of environmental attorneys have been working with us on that. They've gone through the process and established this resolution for the city's consideration. What we would do is restrict the use of the land underlying the building and within close proximity to the building so that the groundwater could not be used for potable water purposes or for irrigation purposes. That's what the resolution basically does. We will put a restriction on any use, any future use by anyone who would lease the property, so they can't use the groundwater. Since there is a potable water source readily available through P U V at the site, okay? Staff, if you can prove.
Second.
Who made, who made the motion?
I do.
Commissioner Camarillo made the motion to close the public hearing, I mean, it's an action item. Motion to approve, seconded by Commissioner Cisneros, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries.
Mayor, can we, can we do, um, are you going to do another one or what?
Which, which one you want?
Well, I want the City Port, Port Isabel E M S is here, they've been waiting for a while.
Okay, I'm sorry, I wish somebody would have brought that to my attention.
I just...
Please, uh, bring that up, and I apologize, I wish somebody would have brought that to my attention.
Are you talking about item eighteen?
Sorry about that, I'm sorry, okay?
Oh, it is, we already did.
Normally, if you bring, if you bring that to my attention, I'd be more than happy to move it up, but bring it to my attention, okay? Okay, item thirteen, please.
Item thirteen, consideration and action on resolution number two thousand and seven dash zero fifty-eight, consenting to the condemnation of a property needed for the construction of the Brownsville Urban System Multimodal Terminal Project.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Our bus is requesting authorization to move forward where condemnation is necessary, the property located on...
But this is what you spoke to us in executive session?
Yes.
Okay. Move to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Longoria, and seconded by Commissioner Traiani, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next item?
Item seventeen. Item seventeen, consideration and...
Next time, uh, Fire Chief, when you have something like that, uh, I try to accommodate people, uh, if I can, okay? So just bring it up to my attention. Uh, please, um, go ahead and read it.
Item seventeen, consideration and action to continue funding the City of Brownsville's share of the Valley Air Care project.
Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, uh, before you have an invoice from, uh, Valley Air Care in regards to the Valley Air Care helicopter, uh, project, it's been existence since nineteen ninety-five. This is the City of Brownsville's portion of twenty-seven thousand four hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Behind me is, uh, Mill Ashton and Renee Perez with, uh, South Texas Emergency Care. If you got, uh, any questions in regards to the project.
Can we move to approve?
Second.
Do y'all want to say something? No? I mean, you sat here so long, I mean, if you want to say something.
It's been entertaining. I, I can, I can give you an update, uh, Mayor and Commissioners, regarding the Air Care project.
Please, please.
You speaking to the...
You need to use the microphone.
Okay.
We've had, uh, uh, the, the flights that we do with the helicopter, and again, the Air Care program is helicopter, airplanes, and, and critical care ground transports.
Very critical.
Which, which, which involve, you know, very serious, uh, patients. When we, when we are requested by City, uh, Brownsville Fire Department, E M S, uh, we've had eight total requests for the fiscal year two thousand and six, two thousand and seven. Out of, uh, out of our flights also, the helicopters also use between the hospitals to move critical patients from one hospital to another. We've had approximately twenty-five, uh, transports from the hospitals here in City of Brownsville that go out to other areas. And then the airplanes come into play. Uh, we move, uh, patients from, uh, this area to burn centers and what have you, around the, around the state of Texas. So our, um, our infilities between, in the City of Brownsville that go out, approximately thirty-eight flights, uh, a year, that's our numbers there. And of course, whenever we do flights, uh, that come back into Brownsville from South Padre or other areas of the county, uh, we've had approximately sixty flights that come back into, uh, this area for medical care, uh, when, when, you know, patient requires that, so... That is our update, and we do appreciate the support the city has given the operation, and, and we cannot continue without your support, so thank you very much.
Well, we thank you for the service you provide, and I know those people who are, uh, helped by that, uh, means a lot to them because it's life and death in many instances. Thank you for what you do, appreciate it, thank you. Uh, Lenny, you want to say anything?
No, sir.
Can we have a motion?
Motion to close.
Motion to approve?
Oh, we already did the motion to approve.
We have one more item, sir.
I have the motion to, uh, approve by Commissioner Atkinson, who seconded it?
Yep.
Second.
Traiani, Commissioner Traiani.
Okay.
Item eighteen, consideration and action to authorize a mutual aid agreement between the City of Brownsville and the City of Port Isabel E M S to provide ambulance services.
Okay.
Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, before you have a mutual aid contract with, uh, City of, uh, Port Isabel E M S, Mr. Charlie Wood requested this, and he just took over the operation and asking for our assistance in case they ever have emergencies, and vice versa, they will assist us at the same time. It's a mutual aid, basically.
I move to approve.
Second.
Uh, who made the motion approve?
I didn't, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Garza, and seconded by Commissioner Camarillo, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you, Fire Chief, okay, motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Move.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Hey, Charlie, Charlie, you can play flag football now.
I'm not playing. So you're all going to make it?